Hi, good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, June 27th, 2023. I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. We're going to start, like we do all meetings, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Now I'll share the reading of the Wakefield Public Schools Mission Statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Public comment. Is there anyone in studio or on Zoom who would like to speak during our public comment section? I don't see anyone in studio. I think we might have one joining us. Virtually, maybe? No? So our meeting started tonight 30 minutes earlier. It was posted that way, so I don't know if maybe that's what happened. But we did have someone say they would come, so we'll try to accommodate that depending on where we are. And we did receive one email from Julie Scott, which was public comment, and I'll enter that into the, I'll send it to Judy to enter it as part of our meeting minutes. Because she emailed us as well and I answered the questions via email.
I don't think I got that, so if you could also forward me a comment.
Yeah, I can forward it to the full committee. Yep. The consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I do. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of June 6, 2023, school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? No? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Budget items. Christine?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Tonight you have the financial reports in front of you from July 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2023. So as you can see, we have about 1.65% remaining of the budget for the last month of the fiscal year. We'll still have transfers to do at the end of the, once all the transfers and the payrolls are done in June. We can look at the grants. The grants have about 23% remaining, but that S R 3 amount can carry forward to fiscal '24. And we'll be spending down the remaining balances for the others. I know the revolving accounts have a lot of conversation about balances, so we'll be talking a little bit more about food services in a few minutes. But we'll still have some more payrolls and bills to pay for the rest of this year. So those balances will be coming down. Does anyone have any questions for the month of May?
Another question, just want to thank you for adding the additional commentary on the bottom of the revolving account page.
Pete and I had met offline and he just asked for a little bit more of explanation about the revolving accounts. But if anyone has any questions, they can just email me or we can talk more in depth after all the accounts are closed. Probably the end of July. And now we have the two payrolls for May.
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants number 46 and 48 as presented.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Nope. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
And we're fortunate, we have two gifts tonight. The first one is from the Greenwood PTO for the purchase of two iPads for the Greenwood Library.
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $1,138 from the Greenwood PTO for the purchase of two iPads for the Greenwood School Library.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the gift for Greenwood?
I'll just add a comment and say thank you to the Greenwood PTO. It's very generous to, for the money for the two iPads for the school.
Great. And the second gift is-
Oh, I don't think we voted. Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's gonna be yes, but let's officially. All those in favor? Any opposed? Nope. Passes unanimously.
Great. And the second gift is $2,500 from the Tractor, Wakefield Track Boosters Club for a stipend for an assistant coach for the spring season for 2023.
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $2,500 from the Wakefield Track Boosters Club, a stipend for one assistant coach for the 2022-2023 spring season.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any comments? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? No. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
So the next item under budget is to discuss a request from the town to have a chargeback to the food service revolving account for for the staff that work for food services, for all of the benefits from that department. So I think we have Dustin O'Brien, who's in charge of food services, who would just like to come and talk a little bit about the program.
So first off, good evening. This is the first time I've met you all in person. So as Christine said, Dustin O'Brien, I'm the Food Service Director for the district. As far as is the request that's made, I'm guessing everyone has read it. So I just want to talk really on, as far as traditional chargebacks that I have seen in the six districts I've worked. It's, I have not seen this type of request come for benefits, retirement, I believe it's Medicare, and workers' comp. So just, the structure of Wakefield's program is not set up to currently cover these costs. We budgeted for meal price increases for next year, but not with the intent to cover anything outside of our normal operating expense. So I think there's been eyes on the fact that we luckily, for one of the first times, have a surplus as part of our revolving account. Two or three years, three years ago, COVID hit, meals were funded completely by the Fed and from the state. We're unsure on what the future of that holds. There have been some states that have said this is going to be indefinite, but we, it would be really tough for us to make a decision on allowing this for future years if we don't know the future of our reimbursements. And when I say that, we don't know what decision the state's going to make this coming school year. If we were to do so, and I think there's, I don't know if there's the grid that is in the handbook, I don't know if you want to put that up.
It's in the packet, yep.
Okay, so in the packet, there is a snapshot of the last five or six years. If you see the request that was made for this current school year and you see what that would do to a year pre-COVID, it would have a significant impact to the program. And then the district, we would actually have, the program would have to come to the, to the school district and ask for that, those funds to be covered by the general fund. So I just want to be really cautious about what decisions we're making for the future when it's the unknown. It's currently, you know, set up for us to do a lot of positive things for the program. We spent about $300,000 this year in replacing equipment, things we couldn't do a few years ago. So I'm happy to field any questions if I didn't touch on anything, if anyone wants any clarity.
And I would also chime in too, because I know it looks, $1.2 million is the available balance right now. We're still waiting for our final reimbursements to come in. And that does look like a lot of money. Historically, we don't have that ending balance. We're barely making $20,000 to $30,000 a year in profit. So you're saying, so what are we doing with this money? And as Dustin was alluding to, we are putting that money back into the program. We are replacing capital projects. We are replacing freezers. We are replacing dishwashers. We are doing things to make this program better. Food costs have gone up 40%. So this money is going to carry us, depending on how the revenue is coming next year, for the next year, maybe two. So I do know, I recognize that it looks like it's a lot of money, but we just want to make sure that it's understood that there was a plan for that.
I think I would also just like to just inform the public and the committee that, you know, Dustin is also working to improve the quality of the food that students are getting. And I think that you've heard that intermittently throughout the year. And you've also seen in the requests around civics projects that students are doing, that they too are hoping that we can continue to improve the quality of the food that we're purchasing, that we're preparing, and that we're putting in front of students. So between, you know, making the upgrades to facilities, improving the quality of food, and also with the kind of the question marks around how this, how the reimbursements will work in the future, I just think that this, the request is, I think we're open to the request. I think it's, the question is, is it sustainable over time? And is this the best timing for this request? This request came in. This is an FY, the '23 budget was concluded and we're closing out the fiscal year. So that's something that is, this isn't a '24 request. This is a '23 request, right? Which is part of it. The other part is that this change be made for all fiscal years as it's presented. And so that's an important request.
I'm curious, in the, in the letter from Mr. Mayo, where, in the last part, it's talking about, you know, budgeting as such going forward, and then past that, it said it should assist in obtaining further reimbursements. Is that, is that how, I guess, is that a Dustin question?
We can invite Stephen. Mr. Mayo is here with us. Thank you for joining us.
Gives me another night out. You know, on a different side of the table, that's a little bit, so thank you. Thank you for hearing me speak. I think that it's very important, and I'll answer your question, Mr. Mayo. I think it's very important that when you have a project or a service that is not tax levy, okay? Like water and sewer, that every, every cost to that service is applied to it. It's applied to that non-tax levy support system, revolving account. So food service, I know before COVID, it was paid by the students paying for lunches, right? Like I did many years ago. And I thought the food was pretty good, actually. So I think it's important that it gives a clear picture of what that service is. Whether it's water, whether it's sewer, whether it's food services, whether it's the academy, whether it's our rec program, that the costs to provide that service are also charged in that service, the true cost. The way I think it may help in getting further reimbursements is that if you do go to the federal state government and you say, hey, our food service costs a million dollars a year, and that million dollars a year does not factor in the benefit costs that we talked about, then you're shortchanging the town in saying what that true cost is. Because maybe you regard more from the federal, the state government, okay? So we're taking a look at that, and it should be no surprise, the finance committee has been pretty clear of looking at revolving accounts, both at the town side and at the school side. So, and the town council's actually been very clear about, we need to make sure that we charge back accordingly through revolving accounts. So, you know, looking at revolving account, this revolving account since 2016, figures that I have, which were compiled by, I guess Kevin Gill and Dan Sherman, shows that even in 2016, there was a year-end balance in the revolving account for food services of $184,000. Then that started to grow a little bit each year. And then in 2022, all of a sudden it exploded, and we know what happened in 2022, coming into that. So in my opinion, $145,000 for fiscal year '23, which is what the ask was in going forward, with an end-of-year balance that was estimated by the school administration during the budget process and the budget book of $729,000. Doesn't seem like it's a big hit, in my mind. I was interested to hear that ovens and equipment would be replaced through the service. I think over the years, a lot of that has been replaced through the capital program. So, you know, we'll look at that side too. I wasn't thinking of that, so thank you for bringing it up. So I think this is important to the finance committee. It's important to the town council that we show true chargeback to these accounts and grants. We're looking at grants too.
So your, in your thought?
Oh, yeah.
So your thought, so I know that you're seeing it coming out of revolving now, but then you're projecting that the food service would absorb this in the long term?
Yeah, this would be just like we do with other revolving accounts. This would be part of what you would budget for.
Sure.
So I'll make two comments, Stephen. So the first about going back to the state if the program's running in a shortfall. The state doesn't necessarily worry about the individual districts. The program is supposed to be sustained within. So if we are short $100,000 on the year, I have to come to the, to the board and say, hey, we need a, we need a coverage of $100,000 from the general fund. The state only reimburses for the meals that are served, not for how many students are in our district. It's strictly off how many students check out.
And salaries. State covers salaries. Or the salaries are covered through the revolving account.
Right.
Right. So I think benefits should be as well.
But we're talking about how the money is reimbursed.
Well, no, I'm saying that if you go forward, you're not giving the true cost of the program. The true cost of the program is food, salaries, benefits, repairs, capital expenditures. That's the true cost of the program. So I feel pretty well armed if I go in and say, the true cost of the program is this. If you're only going to reimburse this for X, why aren't you covering these as well?
For the state?
I, from the state, or federal, or whatever.
Yeah, I don't think they-
I'm not saying that they might do it. I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying I'd like to know the true cost.
The second point I would make is because we're, because we're a self-sustaining account, the, to cover this cost, at the end of the day, would be a meal price increase, and be a significant one. We haven't even addressed the 46% food cost increase since 2016 in any of our meal pricing. We haven't touched on meal pricing since 2016. So these are all factors that ultimately impact families at the, at the end of the day. We, our pricing is, is very, very low at the moment. I would say too low, and we haven't made those adjustments during the pandemic. But it's, at the end of the day, it's going to be, it's, where you cover this is meal pricing. And it's free now, but we don't know how long that's gonna, that's gonna last.
I would just counter that every, every year, even when it wasn't free, you know, someone pays for it, right? It's not really free. There were still revolving account balances at year end. That was a low end of $184,000, $184,000 in 2016. I think the question is, years for $145,000. And it's been, you know, steadily increasing to $729,000 this year, which was, I know it's not the final number, that was the estimate. So it seems to be able to be held.
What was the last year that the price cost increased for kids to buy?
To my knowledge, 2015, 2016.
And what is the, what has been the rough inflation, inflationary rise in food since 2016?
It's 46%. It's been basically 2% for the four to five years after that. And then we've obviously seen that explosion the last two years. So it's, it's a significant cost. I think, you know, Steve has made some points. I think we look at the revenue stream that's, that's in the grid. Our revenue stream was close to, I wasn't here in 2018, but around 900,000 top line revenue. I think our top line revenue is going to be about a million more than that. So a lot has, has changed in the last five years. I just want to be really cautious about our future plan with this.
Well, because it was free, participation doubled.
Right.
So if it's not going to be free, we're anticipating a decline in participation, which means revenue is going to decline. So that's important. So once this funding changes, we're going to have to look at our staffing levels, what our, what our food is, and what we're going to charge families. So we might not have a profit moving forward, depending on what's going to happen with that. And we won't probably know what, to the end of July, Dustin?
Traditionally, they've made the decision around the middle of July.
And as, now, we've already said that, you know, the price per meal might need to increase. But if participation decreases, then that just means that the price is going to increase more on the kids that stay in the program? Like sort of continue to buy their lunches?
So traditionally, we have seen if you do a quarter increase to the meal pricing, you see roughly a 10% drop in participation. If we go back to paid meals, we're going to see a drop in participation regardless. Then you're going to have a meal price increase, and it's going to hit even, even more.
A quarter is in 25 cents.
25 cents, yes. If, the surplus that's there now actually affords the district the opportunity to stagger those meal price increases because the surplus can absorb the, if there is a shortfall.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So first, so thank you, Dustin, for bringing your thoughts and sharing. And thank you, Mr. Mayo, for coming and for sparking this conversation. I think it is one, as you said, both in your remarks and you alluded to in your memo, it is one that obviously we are not, you know, unaware of with regard to the concerns the town's raised, the concerns the finance committee have raised, notwithstanding some of the hysteria around some of it. There are some fair and objective points that need to be taken. Even our position being that, you know, our revolving funds aren't free cash for the school department. They are needed to be spent on the purposes for which the revenues were raised and in concert with the individuals or the entities that provided those revenues. So I think this is a good conversation for us to be having, both tonight and moving forward. I think the issue before us, with regard to the question from Mr. Mayo, regardless of the dollar amount, not to set it aside recklessly, but I think we're looking at two things. I think we're looking at a request on how to address some, some issues around FY, you know, '23. As FY '23 closes, some of those issues are practical, some of those issues are political. So call it honestly what the honestly that. But I think there's an FY '23 question here, and there's a, there's a moving forward question here. And I think one of the key points of significance cannot be understated with regard to what the state and federal government have been doing with regard to the reimbursement piece. It's one thing for us to be able to say, by looking just at the chart, be able to say, well, we've got $1.2 million in the revolving fund today. The, yourself and the business administrator are predicting $700,000, $800,000 available balance, you know, moving into next year. It's one thing for us to have that conversation, not quite in a vacuum, but appreciating that the moving target, the elephant in the room, is we were able to get to that balance because of the reimbursements from the state and federal government, right? If that goes away, it's one, so if we're, if we want to afford $145,000 or some combination of these, these numbers to get us to a, you know, even a compromised position for this year and moving forward and adding it into a planning process, it's, that's why FY '23 is a conversation for us to have about how we close the year that we should do, in my view, should do in appreciation and partnership with, with the town. We are the town. The town is us. We're all one big, we're all one entity that needs to, needs to work in each other's best interest. Moving forward, sort of unilaterally to the town administrator's request for FY '24 and moving forward, I think that, that has to be a different conversation. That's why I would say they're two separate issues. Our budget for FY '24 is not only well-established, it's pretty much put to bed, right? We've gone through those, those things. For us to now find $145,000 or whatever the costs in FY '24 are going to be, obviously they're going to be higher. I'm not quite sure that that's the decision that is made. That would be making a decision in the vacuum. If we were tonight to make that decision, I think that's, that's a lot. Never mind how are we going to build it. Maybe the possibility of building this into an FY '25 conversation come the fall, I think there's appropriate times to have strategic thoughts. I also think that we need to take to heart the requests of the town administrator and the, and the town finance committee. I don't think we should make a rash decision tonight saying yes or no, but I think we need to be thoughtful and mindful that the requests that they're asking us to consider are, are appropriate for conversation. And so, you know, as we, as we address, you know, what are we going to do tonight with regard to Mr. Mayo's request to close FY '23, I would think that that should be what we discuss in the next moments. And have a larger conversation to Mr. Mayo's point, or also in your memo rather, Steve, about what FY '24 and beyond, I think that's a larger conversation and a different one. Not necessarily one that we should be, we shouldn't be automatically opposed to anything that, that gets brought forward. But I think with the, the, the unknown being what is the state and federal government going to do with regard to 100% reimbursements, that, I don't think we can make that decision until we have that appreciation. Because I think if we, if we, if it goes away in FY '24 or '25, we would then, I think, to Dustin, to your point, we would then have to artificially and dramatically raise the cost of school lunch, which undoes, which turns on its head, the very purpose for which we are seeking to, to change the menus, to make the more menus more appealing, and to get more kids having breakfast in the lunch. So I'd like to put the FY '24 and beyond conversation off to the side for another, for another time. Not dismissing it, but, but-
Perfectly fair.
Having it, having it, having it in context of conversations. And certainly with our liaisons from the FinCom, as we would do in the normal course of building a thoughtful budget.
So let's, let's do this. Let's make the motion to- Is the charge back-
Would then have a recommendation?
Yeah, we have a motion, and then we'll open it for discussion for just this, this year. For '23. And then another time, we'll-
Move that the school committee approve the chargebacks for food services as presented.
The motion's been made and seconded. So now it's open for discussion about the transfer for 2023, which was in your packet. So if someone wants to discuss the specific numbers, I'd be-
I have a couple of questions for you, Christine, or maybe for you, Dustin. Do we know, let's say there's an amount that we want to help give back to the town general fund. Do we know, if this isn't today where we're saying it's in perpetuity? It's just a one time and we'll reconsider it next year. Can, do we believe we can support the number that's here and still meet the other pieces that we need to do for food service? Or if not, is there some other number that we'd be able to do that would allow us to continue what we need to do there?
Hold on one second. Can we just say what the number, because we don't have anything, I mean-
That's it. It's $145,801.93. And then there's a breakout that was in there that added up Medicare, workman's comp, health insurance, and retirement costs to come up with that number from the food service employees.
Thank you.
So, so as you all know, the year is not closed. We're not finished with all of our payments and bills. Dustin is still making purchases. We're still paying invoices. We just finalized the final payroll on Friday. So we're not, we don't have an actual final balance yet. We don't have our final reimbursements. But Dustin and I met with the superintendent and we discussed, well, what can we do? We want to support the town. We want to see what we can do one time only. And we thought maybe that we could support the health insurance portion of the request.
And that number is $70,452.69?
Is that fair, Dustin?
Yeah, that's what we discussed, and I think, given the timing, I think that's a, you know, given the relationship, I think that's appropriate.
And just to state the timing, because not everyone can see what we're talking about, the transfer was to happen on June 30th, which is, when is that? Friday? Friday.
Right. So if we are, but if we're closing out and doing an end-of-year report, it might be after Friday. But we would agree to, to, to transfer that money back to the town.
So there may be a follow-up question?
So then maybe a follow-up question would be, perhaps we could revisit at our next meeting, once the books are closed, to determine if there's anything else we can do beyond that, right? I mean, once you have a better idea of how the year closes.
Well, I just don't know if we would be able to sustain anything more than that because of the plans that Dustin had in place for the program. And we're finalizing all of our food contracts for next year. And I don't know if that's going to be done by the end of July. Hopefully by the end of July, we'll know where the revenue is coming from. And that's number one for next year. Because I think we just need to make sure it's clear that this money was going to carry us forward, regardless of how our revenue was coming in. It was going to help us support the food cost increase. Paper supplies have gone up. We're trying to make sure that we are a green community, that we're using, we have vendors for our combustibles and all of that, which costs, our costs have really gone up. We don't really know the final numbers for all that yet. So we think that we can meet the town halfway. We feel health insurance is fair because that is the true cost for the staff of this program, and it's a one-time charge. But really, without knowing all those variables for next year, it's not fair for Dustin and I to make a suggestion about moving forward at this time.
And then the other follow-on question would be the statement that Mr. Mayo had in here about further state and federal government. It sounds like you were perhaps a little skeptical that existed, but I think we should at least follow up on that so that we could respond to that point as to whether or not we were able to get any additional funding.
I think, Dustin, it might be helpful just to explain how you get reimbursed for the meals served, like what you
So each month, we submit for any student that came through for breakfast or lunch at every school for reimbursement. It has to be accurate. We have to put in our serving days. The number that we are reimbursed first is solely off of how many meals are purchased. We do not communicate with the state if we're running at a shortfall.
So whether you have 10 employees or 50, the amount of money you get to serve them is the same amount based on how many meals you serve? It has nothing to do with the amount of staff you have?
We don't put anything in for staffing.
And so when it became free, participation doubled.
Of course.
So our staffing levels had to go up. Costs went up, as you all know, when we go food shopping, right? Everything's more expensive. Paper products were hard to find during the COVID times, so everything went up. But we were fortunate, because we were serving more meals, our reimbursements went up, so we could cover all of that. And we were doing so now at a level that we have this balance. But we know that this is not sustainable. This balance is going to go away.
If for some reason the state continued, or I don't remember where's it coming from?
State.
The state continued the free meals forever, does that allow us to have a different outlook going forward?
Well, we still have to factor in food costs
Yep.
and all of the other vendor costs and the equipment purchases that we're making, and then to see what ultimately our staffing levels should be.
So it could.
Yep.
It could.
It could.
We're just not there yet.
Can I, can I add? And I know, thank you, Tom. I just want to bring up for the committee, you know, items that I think need to be revisited, right? So I think however we're going to proceed and whatever motion's made, I'm in support of. I think Christine's points, I think, are well-made as well as Dustin's. You know, but Steve is also trying to kind of do the best he can, you know, for all departments and to budget prudently. So I think we're open to this conversation. But one of the things that I want to urge the committee to consider, right? One is moving forward, right? And this idea of, you've heard Dustin say, you know, there's an investment coming out of the revolving account for capital, right? And capital expenditures are usually covered by the town. So this is a benefit to the town, right? And so I don't want whatever monies are invested in equipment or spaces to be lost in a conversation because that's a net gain or not add for the town, right? And so I don't want that to be lost. The other part, two parts that I just want to bring up. One is, you know, I think we have a responsibility to just be thinking about how we're negotiating a little bit of a cliff, right? This, you know, the budgets, the revolving account funds that we have, there doesn't forever money, right? And so we're negotiating a little bit of a cliff as costs go up, right? And so I, just thinking into the future, as we're thinking about this in '24, I would urge you to kind of think about the expenditures that are being made for capital, one, and the costs, and the costs really being passed on to students and families, right? And so, because that's the risk that we run here. And then the last piece I'd just like to make is that, you know, we went through a process where we had our FY '23 budget approved, as we have our FY '24 budget, right? To make a change at the days closing out the FY '23, to essentially make a substantive structural change in our budget, changes the process that we, I think, agreed to. Not that we're not open to kind of making any adjustments that we can. We're also looking at trying to close out the year while understanding that we're trying to, if there's funds left over from ARPA, we're trying to return those to the town as well. So we're trying to meet a lot of expectations here. But I would just urge the committee to be curious about the sustainability of this, the costs that could be passed on, and the net add for the town in regard to capital. So I just leave it there.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So the state reimburses us for the meals. So every time a kid gets a meal, the state reimburses us for that meal. Why does the rise in food costs affect what we pay? Does the state, because the state's paying for that food, correct?
The reimbursement rate for lunches is capped, but it's a set figure. But I think the figure is roughly $4.46 per lunch. For breakfast, I think it's closer to, I might misquote it, but it might be, it's like closer to $2.50. The state and the Fed up that every year incrementally. I think what we're seeing is, yes, we're having full reimbursement, but we're having this significant increase in participation that we did not have. So that's the big variable to take in here.
If, you mean, if the state decides to pull the plug, that's the worry because we have increased the enrollment over the last few years.
Right.
Go ahead, Tom.
I think with the use of the word reimbursement, we should be cautious about it, right? I think, not to put words in Dustin's mouth, but we want to be cautious about what's getting reimbursed. It's not the cost of running the program. It's the cost of providing an individual meal to an individual student and within the limitations that the state and the Fed will allow. We can't, we couldn't say that, you know, the cost of the meal is going to be, you know, $8 because we're going to start serving steak tips and lobster, right? They're still going to reimburse us the cost of what the Fed's and the state caps it off as a dollar value. So it's not reimbursing 100% of the cost of the program, of operating the program. And I think that's the caution that I would share, and I think we're talking about here, moving forward, just to artificially add costs in to something that we hadn't planned on. I think now this is a good, this is a good, this is good timing in the end, as we're closing FY '23. It becomes clearer and clearer every day. I think we're able to afford what, we're able to afford certain parts of this. I would argue we can probably afford all of it, frankly. And I would, I will speak to more of that in a minute. But I certainly don't think that that can carry forward into '24. I don't think we can do that. I think we could have, you know, maybe that's how we meet the town halfway. We land on a good square that we work with our partners and we address the issues that the town administrator and the finance committee are asking us to address in a thoughtful and meaningful way as '23 closes. And we have this conversation much more substantively in a strategic way for FY '25 and begin to build some of these costs in. Because right now, these costs are being borne still by the taxpayer. It's not like these are costs that Steve or any of us just pull out of here. These are legitimate costs of operating the program. I'm just concerned that we throw them into the middle of a mix here on, granted, Steve's mail memo was three weeks ago, but we haven't obviously had a meeting since then, so. But it's still the end of the year. So having a conversation around what we can do in FY '23 versus what we can do in the future, I would urge us to keep them not only separate, but, and appreciating what is actually reimbursable. We can't just throw the cost of salaries on as if that's a legitimate cost of an add.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask a question? Because I don't know how this works. The reimbursement cost for, I understand it's different for lunch versus breakfast. That makes sense to me. Is that reimbursement cost the same for every community, let's say, in the Middlesex League? Or is it like Chapter 70 where it changes? Or is it based on what the community provides, or?
So it's based off if the district is operating in the National School Breakfast Program and National School Lunch Program. Private schools that were operating outside of this wouldn't have to adhere to any meal pricing guidelines, nor do I know necessarily their reimbursement structure, if any. But I would say, you know, if we go down the road to Linfield, they'll have the same reimbursement rate that
That Wakefield has.
Yep.
Okay, so I would come back to my original statement then because I think Dustin said that in the beginning, he had worked in other communities that did not include the benefits as part of the cost. That I would say it would be important to all of our communities to get together and say to the state, if you're going to, which is a wonderful program, to continue this program, this program, your partnership in it needs to cover the entire cost. And benefits are certainly part of the costs, whether it's teachers, paraprofessionals, town administrators, superintendents, that's part of the cost of hiring people. So I think this gives us, and collectively with our friends in Linfield and Reading and Stonemont, some ammunition to go forward and say, "Hey, this is a great program. Let's continue it, but let's cover the true costs" because the taxpayer is picking up the rest of this. And anytime we can get the state or federal government to kick in, it'd be a good thing. Thank you, and thank you for the clarification.
If I could add one more, you just said the word Reading, which made me think, if we go back a couple of years, even if we go back to Fiscal '16, '17, '18, we were in partnership with Reading. Our costs were lower at that time. It was a good partnership. We're not there now, but even to compare that structure isn't the same as looking at it today. Not only were the state reimbursements out at 100%, but we were far more cautious to sharing with the town of Reading and their joint management agreement. So, you know, just looking for the town in a vacuum, respectfully, just to look at, you know, historical, you know, bottom-line numbers without the context of what the last five years have actually brought is very challenging. And, but it deserves inhering, starting tonight and moving into the fall as we begin to plan Fiscal '25.
You're not even in Fiscal '24 yet. We're already talking about '25. It's a constant battle.
We have been talking about Fiscal '25. We're not unaware of the cliff. We're not unaware of, what's next?
Go ahead, Kevin.
Sure. I think Mr. Mayo can make some great points, and I kind of second, or we have the same kind of thought process that he does, that we should probably focus on this here. I think it's premature to talk about into perpetuity, just because there are so many unknowns. But I do want to make sure I'm reading this correct, Christine. So, we started the year
You're talking about Dustin's grid?
Yep.
So Dustin provided in the packet a grid. Dustin, do you want to just walk us through it a little bit?
Yeah.
Hold on. Does W can't have the grid?
We should be able to project it.
So
Do you have it right? Page 25 in the packet. I'm swanering at WC.
I can't get any of that information. My brain does not get that.
So I can't explain it ever.
So, all right, so
Dustin, could you excuse me just one second?
Of course, yeah.
Ryan, could you project the grid that's colored, color-coded in the packet, page 25? If yes, great. If no, just give us the high sign. Not that grid.
We'll get there. It's in the packet.
It's part of the school committee packet.
Part of the packet.
I don't, I didn't know.
Got it. No worries.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. It's our mistake.
Okay.
I apologize.
Yes, you can maybe just go through that grid.
Sure. So, so looking from this year back, FY '23, we obviously had a significant amount of revenue. If you see the breakdown between cash sales and reimbursement, reimbursement is all our state and federal reimbursement. Cash sales is à la carte, which would be, you know, bottled water, second meals, things like that. If you look at the second-to-last line item for directs, directs is all of our expenditures that are not salary, that are not food. So that's, we had a full build-out at the Doyle, a full kitchen build-out at the Doyle. I think that was like roughly $130,000. All of those, all of those direct costs cover all of our paper, all of our equipment for the year. Traditionally, the cost of repairs and equipment, that, where I've come from, has traditionally been shared with facilities. We actually are able to offset a lot of that. So these are the questions, or this is just like a quick breakdown on FY '23. I think it's really important to go all the way back to FY '18 and look at what we were, look at what position we were in before that. There's a significant inversion from cash sales to reimbursement. I can't do the, I probably can do the math, but it's about 1/6 the reimbursement in 2018 that we're getting this year. That's a really important piece. If that goes away next year, our reimbursement will be very close, probably more than that $280,000 we see in FY '18, but nowhere near what we're seeing now. And then you also have an effect on the participation. So it's really, it's really hard for us to forecast what next year looks like. I would say it's pretty easy to forecast what it's going to look like if it's universal free. It's going to be more, you know, more of the same. But it's just, I mean, I don't know if there's any other, I mean, I color-coded it. I thought that was like really strong.
I think what you're saying I agree with, and I think that's why focusing just on this here for now, it makes most sense. But so we started the year at 1.2. The profit is $160,000, and then minus whatever additional things haven't hit yet, right?
Right. So we're still taking delivery of a dishwasher, a galvan. We just had a, we had a three-door freezer delivered at the Dolbeer Friday morning. So, you know, these were, these were things we planned for before that, you know, knowing, have an idea of where we're going to be at the end of this school year.
But if I'm reading this right, if we take the 1.2, we add the 160, we're at like 1.4, minus these purchases that you just described, right? Which, yeah, kind of leads me to think, like, can we just be good partners and in good faith? For this year, go ahead with the full amount. We're at 1.4 minus, minus the purchases that were made. 140 seems reasonable to me if I'm reading this correctly, so, I don't know. That's just kind of where I'm landing at the moment.
So we haven't, so I just want to, I think what I'm hearing is we're going to vote on the motion tonight, which we already said, and we said as presented, so that's 145. So any kind of conversation that's going to be on any future years, can we just hold off for when we actually, well, actually, maybe the finance and facilities meeting can take that up as a project or a goal when that's formed, which is going to be later tonight. So it just, if there's any more questions about just this one-time transfer, does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
Less of a question, I would say more of a statement. So I definitely was enlightened today, learning more about how kind of the charge backs work. And I also think Mr. Mayo had some really good points. Like, we talk about free lunch, but it's not really free because the more kids that enroll, greater cost to the town to pay all the benefits for them if we're not covering out of this budget. So I do think that those were all very valid points. And for that reason, you know, I do think we've been lucky. We would be able to support a lot of capital projects that otherwise we may not be able to support. But given that that's added cost as a result of all of these additional free lunches, because we've had to, I assume, add staff to deal with significantly more kids, I would say for this year, which is the only one we're talking about, this past year, if, the current year, if we're able to provide what they've asked, I would vote in favor of that.
Okay. Kevin, do you have anything for this?
Yeah, I'm just, sorry. I'm really bad with budgets, from year to year. Because I'm trying to respect your comment about just sitting with this year.
Well, I'm glad I'm sitting next to you now.
Yes. Yes. I'm sure this will be helpful.
You may have just lost your seat on the finance committee.
But my question, but my question is, so, but don't we have, but don't we have to think about next year? Because that's what I don't understand. Like, so I assume that if you knew 100% that the state's going to give us free lunch next year, you are totally fine with us giving 160,000 back to the town, right?
I didn't hear that.
You had 145.
It started at 70, now it's gone to 145.
145.
But we're going to end up at 210 before it ends.
I'm sorry, the motion says 130.
145.
But I didn't hear Dustin say that he was, I've heard both Christine and Dustin say.
So even if, so even if the state, it was free lunch, if you knew that were a fact magically, you, you still would be hesitant giving, giving back because, I guess, why? Because this is not the big.
I don't know if I'm.
This is not the big.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm prepared to answer that question tonight, Kevin. It's, you know, to Tom's point, I am, I am focused, I mean, I'm focused on closing out FY '23. I don't think I'm going to make a decision today, you know, with our food service contracts, you know, not, not signed on the line yet, that we should do this for years going forward. This is, this is a much bigger conversation. And I can't stress enough, the meal pricing piece is going to be the biggest, the biggest effect here.
Go ahead.
I just want to be, make sure I understand. Christine made a kind of a middle ground suggestion for the committee to consider. Now, I don't know if we have left that.
No.
Well, okay.
I think we're still talking.
Okay.
So right now, we're considering the current motion on the floor.
Yeah, because we said as presented, if someone wants to make an amendment to lower the amount, then someone can do that.
I think that has to be two different motions.
I think you can amend the current motion to a different amount.
It could be less, it could be higher.
Go ahead.
Okay, this isn't what I was going to say, but I'll, but I'll respond to this. So I think, I think we need to land at what we're actually talking about, if I may say that. The motion reads to endorse the recommendation as presented. To my understanding, the recommendation presented by the administration was to pay the $70,000 in benefits.
Correct.
Not to pay 145,000. A $145,000 memo was from the town administrator asking for 145,000. The administration is making a recommendation to us to consider tonight to, of the 145, to pay approximately half, thereabouts, so 70,000 for benefits. Right? Am I understanding what, what the intention of the administration is?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we, if we vote the motion as, as read, meaning that we would be then endorsing the $70,000 proposal. But if we want to do another number, make it 145 or make it 50, we would then have to amend the motion, which I would suggest that we do for purposes of clarity. I would suggest we amend the motion to put a specific dollar amount in anyway. So we don't have this conversation in six months and what did we vote? We all have to go watch the video.
I was at 210.
At least.
Before we move away from Dustin's grid, can I just, I just want to highlight, I know if you're not a math person, this might be intimidating and, but I just want to highlight, I think what Dustin's trying to stress, prior to '21, prior to COVID, look where the revenue came from. It came from families.
Came from sales, right?
It came from sales. So if we go back to that, the reimbursements are going to be $200,000 to $300,000. And that doesn't factor in the 40% of food costs. So I just want to make sure everyone's clear about where that money could be coming from in '24. That's why I know 1.2 sounds like a lot of money, but it's going to carry us through '24 if that happens. So I just wanted to make sure that that was stressed.
I'd, you know, the idea that we don't know where this is going to go. I'm more comfortable with, with having this conversation next year and the year, like, setting this up as part of our budget process and talking about how we can absorb these costs, where we might absorb those costs. I'm not as comfortable just taking out of the revolving account now because in my mind, without knowing what's happening in July, I see that as a parachute. Whether or not it's, it's from what students are going to pay or whether or not it's going to be a drawdown in staff before we're ready or it's going to cut back on sort of the advances that we've already made in the, in the program. I'm just apprehensive. It's, and, and especially like from a fiscal perspective, like I'm told my entire life, like make sure you have a rainy day savings in case sort of your roof collapses. And now, and now it seems like we're drawing down on that a little bit prematurely. If you go back in the data to Dustin's graph and go back to before it was, we were reimbursed, even back to 2016 that Mr. Mayo was talking about, if our revolving account was 187,000 or whatever, and what we're talking today is 145, you're, you're effectively decimating the revolving account with this thing. And I'm, I'm not saying we, we couldn't absorb something of it. I just think it's a budget decision. I don't think it's a one-time, like, can we do this? And I think it's a budget discussion, and I think we can have a robust one. I think we can have a productive one. But as the committee stands today, I do think that the people that we charge with this responsibility, Dustin and Christine, have given us their, their perspective and what they think that we can do and what they're comfortable with. I, I completely appreciate your take, Tom, and you, Kevin, that we can absorb because we're just seeing the number. But I trust that, that people that we charge with that duty have sat in a room and looked at the numbers longer than we have. And I feel like we got their recommendation. So personally, I'm, I'm okay with moving on the motion as, as Christine has asked for it. Okay with amending the language to, to be more precise for what the ask is.
Okay. Do you want to make the amendment? So then we can vote.
I don't know. Pete had his hand up.
Yeah, go ahead.
My, my only question is, if we're voting on a lower number, is there an opportunity when, you know, when all these numbers are in from our food purchases for next year or your, whatever you need to negotiate, where we could reconsider the rest of what has been asked upon us? Versus us just saying it's this number and it's this number because we don't have some of these answers that we may have in two months or three months. So maybe then we could still help with this request just a bit later, and we'll have more data in order to help with a bigger request at that time.
Can you do that with the both books closing soon?
So I, I think we're trying to do a couple of things, Pete, just to be clear for the committee, right? And so I think what would happen is we would move into FY '24 and what that might look like in terms of what we might be able to afford. So I do think we could look at that in '24, the ask in '24. And I think we could look at it early, you know, November, December, early, certainly earlier than we have in the past. You know, as we're closing out as well, I don't want the committee to miss this, right? So we're also trying to close out in a way that allows us to, to also provide some money back to the town as well, right? For this fiscal year, right? And so, and, you know, we're, again, we're trying to, we're trying to do a number of things here. But I think to answer your question, I think it would push it into FY '24.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I just want some opportunity where we could revisit it and we have more data to see if we, if we're not going to agree today to fund what's being asked, if we can revisit it at a time we have more data in FY '24 to look at helping with that.
So I'd like to suggest or offer two procedural suggestions. One, and it would be back to the vice chair, to withdraw the current motion as opposed to amending it and thereby eliminating the confusion around, around that. So if you're minimal to withdrawing that motion, whoever seconded it would also agree. Then we can make a new motion and sort of start fresh. But that, that would be procedural. That would be what I would recommend, is we withdraw that motion so it's not a, it's, it's clear.
It's clean.
Clean. Is that something that you would be, as a person who made the motion?
Yes.
So with that in mind, if I may, I'd like to make a motion.
Does he have to withdraw as first?
I thought he just did.
Yeah, I thought you said you were making two points, and so, okay.
The second point is to, is to actually make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Okay, great. Go ahead.
And then, so I would like to offer forward a motion in its, in its stead on this topic. I'd make a motion that we, that we reimburse the cost as, as requested of us by the town for fiscal '23 only for 145,801.93.
Second.
Okay, a motion's made in second. Do we, do we have any discussion?
I'd like to speak to the motion, if I may. I think to, to a number of the points that have already been stated without having to, 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 to go through them. One, one thing I did want to say, which is what Stephen brought up a moment ago, which, and I couldn't agree more, that, that my support of this, of this motion and this number is in no way a representation of any sort of, you know, a lack of approval, a lack of confidence in the administration. I think hopefully everyone, all the administrators in this, in this room know where I stand with regard to appreciation and respect and acknowledgement of, of your work and your attention to, to, to this detail. I think where this decision lies, in my, in my view, in making the motion for the full amount for FY '23 only, was to respond appropriately to the town, to the administration, to the finance committee who have asked us to be thoughtful as we close fiscal '23. And I think that is a responsible thing for us to do. We can, we can make this affordable with the, even going back to the, the projected end-of-year balances that were part of the FY '24 budget, of which were probably going to be higher than what your, what the budget, what the FY '24 budget had for projected balances back in, say, February. Where likely, even with the purchases of food service equipment and new, new supplies and materials, we're likely to be higher than those projected balances. I think it's in, it's in good partnership, and I think it's, it's affordable. And I certainly want to reiterate nothing but confidence in the administration.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, no, just in the, through the budget process, like prior to this, when we, when we voted and in town meeting, we made up our budget. At that time, we, we gave back money that we had in surplus to, to try to sort of take the edge off of our budget, to bring it down more in line with sort of what the finance committee was asking us. And so this, this just caught me off as being, so that was done, and now this is after that process. So not accounted for, not given a chance to sort of, you know, be thought of for a lot of time by folks and come to a place. So that's, that's kind of where I get stuck. And I think it wasn't an insignificant amount that sort of, there was, there was opera money that went back. There was, I'm trying to think of the other funds. I think there was stuff from Wakefield Academy that went back. It was.
You're talking about fiscal '24 moving forward.
I think I'm talking about.
No, you're not.
No.
We didn't do any, we didn't take any action in fiscal '23 at town meeting. Everything that was, I agree with you. We were asking, we put half a million dollars aside.
Yeah.
Moving into fiscal '24. But this request comes as we close down fiscal '23.
Okay.
And the affordability of, of, of closing fiscal '23. And, but my motion hopefully is very clear. Certainly the commentary is that this needs to be a one-time ask and allow us to properly have the conversation. I think, I think with lots of, of moving parts, those that Dustin articulated quite well moments ago, and things that, and things that, that belong in a thoughtful strategic process. For me, it's a conversation for fiscal '25. I mean, it's not even a conversation for fiscal '24. We've already taken the, the hit. We've already managed and manipulated appropriately the things that the town has asked us to do on the floor of town meeting of fiscal '24. I think the conversation around food service is a fiscal '25 conversation that we begin in November.
But in this letter, in this request, is an FY '24 component.
I know.
That we're saying that we're going to revisit. So if you're, if you're suggesting.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying this is a fiscal '23 for 145, and then we will deal, we will deal with the budget process for fiscal '25, which begins in earnest in the fall.
So, but, but there's also a component here where this, this has an impact on '24 and '25. They're not mutually exclusive. So to say to move it to '25, after Stephen's point went up, there's already been a $500,000 adjustment in the '24 budget. So when you, when you kind of start to do the look back, right, we go from 500, you know, we're looking at trying to return funds at the end of this year, right? So there's a lot we're trying to do here differently than we ever have in the past in regard to being good partners. So, you know, and so I, from, from my perspective, I, I think that the recommendation made by the administration is a principled recommendation. And, and, and so I, I don't want that to be lost in the conversation. But to say that it's '25 is not completely accurate.
Well, in all due respect, I, I think that the, the fiscal '24 hit isn't to food service. I think we're going to see a higher balance than the, than our fiscal '24 budget projected, even with this coming out of it. So I, I.
Entering into '24.
Entering into '24.
But probably not ending '24.
Correct. Oh, I certainly agree with that. I'm talking about, I'm talking about your end-of-year projection as we enter fiscal '24 is not only going to be, likely to be notably higher than the projection in the budget book.
So, and, and just to be clear, in regard to us moving forward and planning all of, all of our budget. So you heard Mr. Mayo, as he pointed out at the beginning, Steve, correct me if I'm off. You know, it's, it's a priority for FinCom and for Town Council to revolve, to kind of charge back as much as we can to enterprise accounts, revolving accounts, and that includes grants, right? So right now, for example, a conversation that's not yet had, but what this implies is that, so for example, in our special education grant, our 242 grant, which is almost a million dollars, which funds, you know, 80 of our 104 paras, to charge back, for example, benefits and all costs to that grant, that would mean that we would have to cut that, cut those 80 positions by 40, right? And so, so we're, you know, we're not just talking about $145,000 here. We're talking about, we're entering into a conversation that, and where a recommendation's been made by the director of food service and the director of finances, right? What, what we think we can afford in '23, which is a late ask, as Stephen pointed out, which is above and beyond the budget that we agreed to, right? And, and I want to be clear, again, we're trying to close out this year. We're negotiating a contract, and I know we're negotiating contracts across the town. And I want to be mindful of this and respectful of this, right? And so, so we're, so, and so go one of us, so go all of us. We want to be good partners and do things better and differently than we have in the past. And I think we're moving into that space, but I, I think to say that this is a '25 issue is not because when we enter '24 to meet that conversation and expectation that we're going to look at charging back to grants, and I use a concrete example of our 242 grant, which is almost a million dollars, which, which funds 80, 80 para positions. So to take on a 50% increase for benefits in that grant, that, that's the principled conversation that we're having here.
Right. Respectfully, I think you're putting us on a slippery slope that I'm not prepared, odd to put us on.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, while that's, I think that's what the town administrator is asking of us. I don't, I'm not prepared to have that conversation at all. Until we have a thoughtful process around it. So I don't want it, I, so I'm glad you actually raised that point around the 240 grant and other things, that, that it would be a significant change to oper, to operations, to be able to, to apply this moving forward to, to a whole swath of, of other things.
At the end of.
We need to look, we need to look at this in the context of closing out fiscal '23.
Right.
And the affordability thereof.
Right.
And have it in a larger conversation with many other factors that are not part of, of tonight's, the known factors tonight.
Point taken.
Okay, so we have a motion to transfer one time, 145, hold on. I think we talked about it a lot. So just to be clear, this is a one-time. We will have another conversation at a later date. All of those in favor of the motion? All of those opposed? So I'd like to make another motion. What do you want to make it?
I can make it. Move that the school committee approve a chargeback from the town to food services in the amount suggested by the administration, specifically the business agent, in the amount of the health insurance quantity of $70,452.69.
Second.
So we have a new motion made in second. Is there any discussion? So I'm, I just, I'm going to vote in favor of this because I feel like we're meeting halfway. So I'm, I just, I'm going to vote in favor of this because I feel like we're meeting halfway. We're not saying no, we're not saying yes. That's just how I feel. It's the town's money. There was, there's a favorable balance. We're happy to add some of it back. So all in favor of the new motion? Okay. All opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. So thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to take up so much.
Oh, it's all right.
Fantastic, Steve.
Always welcome.
Lots of new members.
Okay, so we're going to take some things out of order. I'm going to let the superintendent go before the chair. Who? Oh, we're, hello?
Chairman Superintendent Lyons, school committee members, I'd like to bring up a point of order. I was here coming in to speak at the public comment. The school website says the meeting starts at 7:30. So I think that should be changed. I did not receive the agenda.
Oh, that's okay. So I.
So I understand time-wise, but I, if there's any opportunity to speak, I'm here to support the logo.
I, I, I was thinking, because I did see you come in and I'm sorry that there was a time change and actually now July and August will also start at seven as well. I was thinking to have you come up, because we have some students that have been in the hallway. So if we could do the, that first, then do the logo, which I think you're here to speak for, you could speak before the logo. Does that work?
Yep, I respect that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about the time. So now you're starting with school start.
Thank you so much. We, we would like to, Ryan, I believe that there are students in, in the waiting area. And I'm, we're welcoming in two members of the youth action team that have done really, really nice work in their research around school start times. And I think one I know is Alexis Manzi, who's, who presented this. She's an expert at this and she's, this is probably her third or fourth time. And, and so. Hi, how are you? Sorry about the wait. Thank you so much for your patience. Could you please introduce yourselves?
Sure, I'm Amy Cherevolati. I'm the prevention and wellness coordinator for the town of Wakefield and I work with the youth action team.
Thanks so much, Amy.
I'm Alexis Manzi. I'm, I go to Wakefield High School and I'm youth action team leader.
Thank you so much. And so we may, we just have to make, we just have to switch the slides to the, I, right there in the middle, there, oh, close. There we go. So when you need to switch, all you need to do is just say, next slide, please.
Okay.
All right?
So I don't have to.
That, Ryan, will that work? Beautiful, thank you.
Okay.
It's also on the screen. I don't know if you can see the screen.
Yeah, great.
It might be easier so you don't have to crack your neck.
So hello, everyone. I'm Alexis Manzi and I'm going to be a senior at Wakefield High School next year. I've been a youth action team leader for three years now. And as youth action team leaders, we work with the health department of Wakefield to help promote healthy teen lifestyles and healthy teen living. That's why I'm here today to present information regarding a later school start time for the high school. So there are many pros and cons of a later school start time, but I'm here today to show you the statistics about why we need a later school start time for the high school. All these statistics I'm about to list are approved and looked at by pediatric specialists and sleep medicine organizations around the country. So this project has been endorsed by the board of health of Wakefield and as well as our youth action, sorry, not youth action, Wakefield Youth Council. To begin, I would like to show you some common health risks associated with lack of sleep since having an early start time takes away from students' sleep schedules. Some of these common risks are being overweight, drinking alcohol, smoking, and using drugs. Some more common risks associated with adolescents who not get enough sleep are they are more likely to disengage in daily physical activity, suffer from depression, engage in risky behaviors like drinking alcohol and using drugs, as well as getting into car accidents on the way of school due to lack of sleep and perform poorly in school. I have some statistics that support later school start times. My first one is that there was a study conducted on students in many different states in the country and their school start times were pushed back later. And once these school start times were pushed back later, they found that there was an increase in graduation rates from 77% to 88%. Another statistic is that as kids become teenagers, their melatonin release starts to happen later at night and does not go away till earlier in the morning. I mean, sorry, till later in the morning. That means that they need, that they don't feel the need to go to sleep till later at night and that they need more rest in the morning. So by having a later school start time, this will help align teen bodies with their sleep and activity patterns, which overall benefits their mental health. And lastly, in 2016, schools in Seattle, Washington changed their school start times to later and this showed an average 34-minute increase in students' sleep. And even though 34 minutes does not seem like a lot of time, it still had a positive impact on teen learning in those schools. Some more statistics I have about later start times are that the academy, American Academy of Sleep Medicine reports that teens should get at least eight to 10 hours of sleep per day. And when kids do not get the right amount of sleep, they perform poorly in school. And another organization called Project Citizen was an amazing success when many schools decided to push their start times back almost an hour. NOSAT Regional High School, Massachusetts, was part of this organization and their school start times were pushed back later and they found that there was a major decrease in failing grades, tardiness, and suspensions. And my last statistic is that California was the first state to push all school start times past 8:30 and this change showed an increase in sleep, better grades, decre, and a decrease in teen car crashes in these schools. So overall, the pros of starting high school later are that many kids stay up late doing homework. So having a later school start time will allow them to get more sleep in the morning and maybe even finish up their homework in the morning if they need to. Having more time in the morning also lets parents have more quality time with their kids in the morning. And when kids have to go to school, school any earlier than eight in the morning, they're half asleep on their car ride to school, which I know because my sister Olivia is like that all the time. And so having a later start time will prevent kids from being asleep during their first period classes. When kids have a later school start time, they also have more time to get themselves ready, eat a good breakfast and take their dog for a walk, et cetera, which allows for a better, just overall day and like getting themselves ready in the morning. And these pros especially apply to students in the MEKO program since they have to wake up extremely early for their bus. This will let them get a reasonable amount of sleep in the morning. Now I have some challenges that we need support from the district if we were to move our start time back later. So if school start times were pushed back later, this may create a problem for childcare in the morning for parents. Middle school and high school students will be going to school at very different times and this might cause an issue with getting each kid to school. But all elementary schools offer before-school programs which can help with childcare issues. This might also create a busing, busing issue for, for the schools since many schools cannot afford buses after these later start times. But many schools in Middlesex region have actually pushed their start times later and have had no issues with busing. I've talked directly with the woman who is the head of the Melrose pushing the start times later project and she succeeded and explained to me that by moving the start times later, that the busing budget was actually less in the long run. And lastly, later start times also means having a later end time to school, which can be an issue since many kids have sports and clubs after school as well as jobs and siblings to take care of. But even if we push the school time back 45 minutes, we would be drawing the majority of, of schools in our region who have pushed their start time later. So this would actually be more convenient for after-school activities. So I created a survey for students in the town of Wakefield and students from other towns who already have later start times. This survey is a small sample size that I put out to get some quick feedback. Now, I plan to conduct another survey later in this process. So I have the results to this survey that I've taken. So first I took a survey of Wakefield students who go to the high school and students were asked, would you rather have a later school start time? 93% of these students responded that yes, they would rather have a later school start time and 53% of students responded that they would like to start at 8 o'clock AM. Some pros and cons, when asked what pros and cons there would be of a later school start time, the most common pro mentioned was what they, they would get to sleep in and that they have had more time to do homework in the morning if needed. And one challenge listed was that school sports would have to start later. So then I polled students from other towns who already have a later school start time and asked them what they think of their later school start time. So people, so students were asked, do you like your later school start time? 100% of students responded yes. A majority of students who took the survey started at 8:15. Some pros and cons listed when asked, what do you think the pros and cons of their later school start time is? One pro listed is that all students get to sleep in and one con listed is that they get out of school later than other schools, which isn't really the case anymore since so many schools have made the change to move later. So recommendations. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends start times for middle and high school students should be no earlier than 8:30 AM. But even if we moved our start time to 8:05 or 8:15, I feel it would impact the teens in the high school positively. So overall, we need a later school start time because the destruction supports students' mental health. Students will get better grades, there will be less student car accidents and many schools in the Middlesex League start their school day much later than Wakefield's. Here's a list of the, of all the start times of schools in our region and whether or not they've made a change to their later, to make their start time later. We are part of three districts out of 12 that have made no change to their start time. Recently Lexington has moved their start time to 8:30 and Belmont High has moved their start time to 8 o'clock. And currently Wilmington is working on changing their start time to later according to their superintendent. Nine districts in our region have made this change with successful results. Thank you for listening.
Great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well done.
Does anyone have any questions?
That is probably a question for Doug or maybe Karen, Karen by proxy. One of the things I think would be helpful would be, you know, this clearly evidence that says a later start time is going to be better for high school kids. But obviously, as Alexis said, this has an impact potentially throughout the district as we look at buses and everything else. One of the things I think would be helpful is like a chart that says, here's the current start time across every school. Here's the end time. Here's what would have to happen when we change us around. And then giving the opportunity for families and staff to chime in and, and give some opinion. Obviously, we'd phase it in if we do this over time. But you'd want them to have some opportunity to see this and see whether their life is going to get better or worse as a result of making this change because they've obviously planned their life around the specific hours that we have. So that's something I think would be pretty helpful.
I agree completely. I think you're, you're stealing some of our thunder here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I think the research is, you know, it's definitive that we should move our high school start time later. And just piggybacking on what Pete said, the issue, because I've talked with parents and teachers in other communities that have gone to later start times, it's always the unintended consequences. And whenever you have a change of the scope and magnitude, I think it's incumbent upon us to get all the interest groups together, the parents of pre-k, the elementary school parents, the bus companies, and, you know, looking at traffic patterns, doing traffic studies. And I think that everyone agrees what the goal is. Like we, we all 100% agree with the results of your presentation. I don't think there's going to be any, well, I, I hope, I, I hope there's going to be no one against this. But I think that, you know, what we have to do now moving forward is to really work with other constituencies within the town to really make sure that this process, assuming we go forward with it, is going to have as small negative consequences as we can, as we try to.
Go ahead, Kevin.
This was an excellent presentation. You did a really, really good job.
Thank you.
As Mr. Fontanella said, I, I think the research is pretty clear and you found it and I think articulated it really, really well. I'm curious about the survey, particularly of the current students. What was your sample size? Just kind of curious. I can't help it.
Yeah, it was, it was actually pretty small. I had to get this together like pretty quickly for my presentation. It was about 15 students from Wakefield and 15 students from other towns. And even though it's a small sample, like if we continue with this process, I plan to conduct a bigger survey to get more of a opinion.
That's excellent. And so if, looking at what you've uncovered, you had mentioned maybe even 45 minutes, but the, the Academy of Pediatrics is 8:30. At this point, subject to change, what would be your first thought for a potential start time? Knowing that there's all these complications that you, you identified.
I mean, I know the, like, the start time that Pediatrics recommends is 8:30, but it seems like a big jump, like, to go like that far, like into like what our school day is right now. So I think anything really helps, like even moving like just 45 minutes. It still helps teens like have a better mental health and get more sleep in the morning. So any change really helps.
Can you share with everyone what your start time is now?
7:30.
7:30.
Thank you very much. I don't know, Mr. Ingles has raved about your presentation. You lived up to it, so great job, great job.
Anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Tom.
Actually, I just wanted to chime in as well and congratulate you on an outstanding presentation, especially about the research. You know, asking the questions about how people feel and the survey is important to get student input. But the research is, is a critical piece and I think you knocked that out of the box. So thank you for sharing that and very well done.
Thank you.
So thank you again, even on a replay, it still, it still packs a punch. You've done a good job. It's funny, I, I got to sit in on some of the, the youth action teams breakfast the other day and just hear about all the work. And, and you, you take that action part seriously. It's not, you know, you've done the research, but you're following up and sort of the way that you've partnered and found collaborators through the health department, you know, because they, you know, you folks joined us in the policy meeting as well. And sort of, so you found collaborators to kind of help you put weight behind your message. And so when you come and there's a seriousness to it, you know, while it's, we're not going to make a decision today, it definitely opens up the conversation. And as everyone has already said, we know that there are going to be a lot of different stakeholders. But I, I think it's a, it's a space that we can do work in. So although you may not see it, I don't want you to think that, that your work wasn't, wasn't worth it. I think it, you know, absolutely worth everybody that you put into it.
Thank you.
So, so what do you, oh, go ahead.
Great job. I was on the subcommittee and I heard it, but it is better the second time around. But, and I had a little kiddo listening in that was like, yes, yes. I was wondering, all the statistics on, on, on how it benefits kids' health, were you specifically looking at the age range of high school or was it also like middle school age kids as well? Because the middle school start time is not that far off from the high school. So I'm just curious.
30 minutes.
Yeah. Oh, it is. They're at eight. Okay.
Yeah, I looked at, there was many websites I use and I use podcasts from like pediatric specialists and other like organizations and they, they looked at both high school and middle school, like surveys and like what their health is like.
Both were the set similar timeframe of like that 8:15, 8:30 start time? I know that's logistically impossible to do at the same time, I'm just saying. Thank you.
So, so what, what do you think next steps? Do you have any recommendations? I don't.
I do, I do. I, I, first, I, I, again, you know, you crushed it again, again. And so thank you so much, right? And, and I have information for Wilmington. That was the only slot, that's the only space that I have that we can fill that in on your, on your slide there. So we've seen this, we've heard it. I do think the, the research is compelling. And so I, I do think there's a lot to learn from other districts that have made these changes. And I do think Kevin Fontanella's comment, Mr. Fontanella commented that, you know, it's the unintended consequences. It's the things we, we think we know, then there's the things we don't know, right? And how do we work with our constituents, our audiences? How do we work with families? So how might, so because we have kind of a, we, we use the same buses for elementary, middle, and high, right? So they're the same nine buses, right? So if we opened all schools at the same time, it would create a traffic jam in town. Parents wouldn't be able to drop off all of their children at different schools at different times. But the, the pragmatic part or the practical part about how a fixed number of buses can get to each place in that timeline are things that I think we need to work through. I think they can be worked through as, as evidenced by the number of districts that have made this change. But I think like Kevin's, Kevin's point is some districts have done it better than others. Any, change is hard. Any, change is hard, but it, I do think we should study this and make a recommendation to the committee. And I do think, you know, we should work with the youth action or invite the youth action team to, to doing this kind of group work or committee work and working with constituents. We need to hear from our teachers. We should hear from the teachers' union. We should hear from coaches. We should hear from parents, right? Who have kids at different, different levels, different schools. We should hear from teachers that are parents that have to drop off their children in different places. So there are many moving parts which aren't captured in the research, which has, has played out sometimes well and sometimes in, in very, very challenging ways. So I, I think if we're gonna do this well, I think we need to study it. And I do think we need to kind of look at constituents and, and start to invite people to this conversation. I think what I would propose is that in the fall, we convene a group. It would be great to have a subcommittee from school committee involved, if possible. I don't know if that is possible, or one or two school committee members, if possible. And to, to kind of create a schedule, of course, on an off evening, not a school committee evening, right? But where we get it, we're get together and maybe it can coincide with the youth action team schedule before or after where we're getting together. And just thinking about who might we be considering for constituents that we would like to speak to and hear from? And how might we be able to hear from other districts that have done this? Because I think that other districts that have done this are really able to share what has gone well and maybe what has been some unintended challenges. Is that fair?
Yes.
Am I covering everything?
Yes.
But I also think that if we change the high school start time, the elementary schools, other schools' start times will change as well.
Correct.
So it's, so it's something to also look into.
Yeah, that's exact, that's exactly my point, yes. Yeah. So in what some districts have done, which I'm not advocating for, I just want to be clear, not advocating for this, what some districts have done is they've made the simple change by taking the elementary start times and make those the high school start time and make the high school start time the elementary start time. That means that elementary would start at 7:30 and the middle school would stay at 8:05, right? And so it's, it's at eight-ish, right? So it's, it's in a better place than the high school. But the challenge of, for example, bringing a kindergartner to school at 7:30 is a challenge, right? I don't know that, some parents might be like, we could do that, no problem, my child's up at six. Other parents might not be, Kevin's giving the thumbs up, you know? Other parents, I, I have three children, I, it would work for two, but not for the third, you know? So anyway, we just have to kind of think this through and really think about how we would do it. So the answer to your question, this could potentially affect other start times, the answer is absolutely.
Yes, and release times.
Right, release time and Alexis touched on athletics.
Academy.
And the bus schedules after school, it would affect academy after school, which would also push youth sports and the rec department and programming. So again, there's the unintended parts of this that I think, you know, other districts have managed, but we just need to understand how they've managed them and how they've problem solved around them.
Or we stop them at 9:15 and it doesn't affect anyone.
Or we stop them. Okay.
Yeah, wanna, wanna make a motion?
No.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? Does anyone have any other questions? No, thank you very much. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it. So can I ask with the, with the chair's permission, we have two other adults, and Elena, could you indulge just for one more quick report? Okay, awesome. We have Bev Elsowitz.
Yep.
And Trudy Conley here to just give a, a quick report on summer programming.
Great.
I think I saw Trudy down the hall.
Yep.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi Bev, hi Trudy.
Hello.
I, thank you so much for your patience.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
All right, I'm not a night person, so. It's too late for me.
So Trudy's here representing Wakefield Academy. She is the, the admin who works collaboratively with Estelle Berta, who's our director. Estelle is on vacation this week.
She is.
And so, you know, you've got to get it in before summer programming starts. So Trudy is here to talk about Wakefield Academy and, and Bev is here to talk about extended year services, right? And I think both are super exciting and are super, I'm looking forward to hearing about the plan.
Who wants to go first?
I guess I can go first. The extended program is governed by IEPs and it runs five weeks, August, September, yeah, September, July 10th to August 10th. And right now we have 477 students registered. I think we're still feeling a little bit of the COVID effect because the numbers are really large this year. It's, it's a nice program. They have reading, math, and writing. And then we, a few years ago, we added an enrichment class to break it up so that it's not like an all-day boring day and not liking school. So they usually, one day they'll have STEM and the other day they'll have PE. It's from pre, preschool all the way up to high school if they're on an IEP. A lot of tutoring, a lot of speech, OT, PT is included in their day. I don't know if you have any questions?
Which grades are at the Galvin this year? Are they all at the Galvin?
No, we, the pre is so big, they're, they're in the Doyle. So we have pre-K students going into kindergarten, all the way up to the high school students that require tutoring. They're, we take care of them also.
So the program is at the Doyle and the Galvin or the?
The Doyle and the Galvin, yes, yes. One, one class is at the high school this year, the School of Life, because it makes sense to acclimate their area instead of coming down to us. It's better for them to do up there with their environment. Yes.
The hours?
The hours are nine to 12.
It's Monday through Thursday. They get, they give them Friday off.
Monday to Thursday, Friday's off.
Is there a cost?
No, it's governed by the IEP. If the IEP, if the team, they determine if the child is eligible to prevent aggression of the previous year's skills.
From our teachers that are doing the program, how many of the teachers are current WPS staff versus other districts?
We have a, almost all of them are Wakefield staff. There's one or two that like building subs or did student teaching in Wakefield, but I have to pretty well know them to work with the students because they have to be able to follow the goals and objectives on the IEP. And then they're also eligible for the after-school program, the extended day. They have opportunities for that and the students that receive just speech or tutoring with us also have the opportunity to go back and forth into the academy. So we kind of joined at the hip and it really is, I think it's been very beneficial for both programs.
And do they get that part of the program for free or do they pay for the, the academy portion?
They, that part of the academy is, is, there's a cost to it, but there's also sliding scale depending on the needs of the, of the children.
Thank you. It's a wonderful program. I can speak from experience. Go ahead.
Looking at the studies that have come, come across the country for the last month, last month, showing how students, you know, have fallen even further behind than we thought because of COVID, I just want to thank you for running this program.
Oh, you're welcome.
Basically, studies have shown that extended tutoring and, you know, extending instruction, you know, even over the summer, as unpopular as, as I'm sure it is to many, many students.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's so large this year.
Yeah, but it's so, but it's so necessary. And, you know, I really think it's, I really think it's really, really important. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Go ahead.
And let me just add on, on to that, Bev, thank you, not just for this year, but for always. You have been, you have been a, a key figure in, in, in being a champion and an advocate and a defender and, and a loving and a caring person for so many of, of our special needs of students over the years. And this, this district is ingrained to you for, for social much. Thank you.
Trudy, you should go first.
So our summer program consists of our, we have an academic program as well and that runs from nine to 12. And then we have a summer camp program, which is a morning, afternoon, or, you know, both, parents can choose. And we also offer an extended morning for the kids that are coming maybe to the SOI program and the parents need to drop them off early, so we take them in. And then we have our enrichment programs running as well in the afternoon, so that's the end. And we also, so we work out of the Doyle for the pre-K program and we work out of the Galvin for our K through five camp program and our Rising one through six for the academic program.
The academic program mixed between the IEP students and the academic program you were talking about, are they different teachers?
They're different, yeah. It's just basically for families that feel their, their children may need, you know, some support, they're not on IEPs or they maybe didn't qualify for summer services. Or some parents just feel they want to have their kids still, you know, academically, you know, involved somehow, so, yeah.
And then how many students are signed up for that program?
So we have our academic, 95 students, but we, they don't have to choose, it's 95 in total for the summer, but they don't have to choose like every week. They can, you know, we, we ask them for the academic program to come for at least a week solid, but then they don't have to choose every week, so.
And is that program still open if a parent needs coverage for a week to do something for the kid?
The academic is open, the other ones are, they're pretty, they're closed because we just, for space reasons and so, like, it's more an issue, the pre-K staffing and space. The Galvin, we probably have space, but, I mean, staffing, but not the space, so, yeah. So we have 191 students in the K through five camp and we have 43 students in our pre-K program.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was, I just, I feel like as we come back from the pandemic, I feel like the summer programs, the numbers just keep going higher and higher and higher and, and every time you just meet the need, like both programs. There are so many facets. There's, you know, kids that are sort of, they're, they're assigned, you know, through their IEPs that they should do some extra work. There's offerings for families that just feel that they need it. It's, it's, yeah, people often think that the school system goes to sleep during the summer. We say this, but you, you all are still firing all cylinders, so, thank you.
That's true. It's crunch time right now. And a week and a half to go.
I just have a question. I asked that you come in just to thank you for the work that you do, but also I, when the, when the academic program first started, it was funded by a grant, correct? And did that happen a one or two years? And I think it sold out like, right, because it was, there was no cost.
I want to say two years.
Two years, it was two years.
Two years. And it was sold out, right?
Yeah.
But the, but the program's just as good and, and kids loved it, right? That's the feedback I got anyway. So I, so what is the name, so I, I, at the beginning I was confused. There's a, what is the name of the academic versus the name of the camp?
So it's called our WOW Summer Academic Program.
Okay.
And then just our WOW Summer Camp.
Okay.
So the academic is in the camp, I guess.
And what would you say is the major difference in the academic, you're just getting?
So, yeah, so they have our schedule, they start in, at eight, eight to 9:15, they do ELA, then nine to 10:15 they do math. And then they have, you know, snack time outside and then they come back and they do like a hands-on science program that's supplied, supplied by CodeWiz. So it's, it's really fun. They love that, they love that piece of it, so.
So it's a fun program for kids, I think.
And the camp is just, it's just fun.
Teachers are great, so. If anyone's still looking for something for their, I'm a big fan of, I'm making my kids go to academic camp.
A lot of people do, they'll put them in the morning academic and the afternoon.
Yeah.
So they can have some fun and so.
So thank you. Thank you for coming in and hanging in there.
Thank you so much for all of you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
I, I, I don't know if you noticed when you were talking about how amazing the extended year program is, Bev was getting a little crimson because she's profoundly uncomfortable when it's about how amazing she is. But for those of you that are, make your way in and out of Galvin, her classroom is, if you go in the door instead of going left to the main office, her classroom is the first one on the right at street level. You'll often see a van parked in the fire lane and that's Bev. And she spends, she gets to work about, you know, seven and leaves at about six. Every single day, every single day. She has students in the afternoon that were in her program that are now at high school. Some are out of high school and they come back and they spend the afternoon with her. Some work and do service around the school. And she also runs the HISA program, which is our GED program. I believe that she has a 100% success rate in regard to helping students with the GED. She is one of our very, very, very best employees for the Wakefield Hook Schools. And I, I didn't want to say this without her here because I think she probably would have cried. And so, but she's amazing, amazing, amazing. So thank you for, for the round of applause that you gave. I thought it was very generous and appropriate. Next up is, before we jump back to student data, would like to do the Warrior logo. So in terms of, Elena, did you have a public comment that you wanted to make before we had this conversation?
Yeah, we'll open in public comment. If anyone else.
Thank you. When Beverly Elsowitz.
Of course. I, we agree, we agree. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm sorry for the misunderstanding. I just looked at the website. So I was obviously excited that I knew that the logo was on the agenda tonight, but I was also alarmed that information that was in your packet was out on social media about the logo on June 20th prior to the superintendent speaking about the Warrior logo update. And I'm not sure if you're informed about that, but most of the community doesn't have access to that page. And there was the potential logo that's, I guess, unveiled on the page, but there was also public comment and there was even exchanges about recommended changes that were suggested to that school committee member that they would personally pass along to you or to the school committee. So I, along with other members that have been following this and the interest in the logo since the journey began in 2019, 2020, had a lot of concerns. I'm just wondering if the school committee member was directed to post, post on Facebook prior to, you know, this discussion taking place tonight. Did any other school committee members post? Is there, is this following a school committee, a school policy or a school committee policy? I would hope that social media is not encouraged for school members. I, I mean, I guess it's not fair, we're public and, but, you know, you're setting the boundaries and, and we're just following along. So I'm wondering if any of that public comment on Facebook was shared and if that changed the design that's going to be presented tonight? And if there's any training or policies set on social media use? And then my final comment, if in the future, maybe it's best for the public elected members not to participate in social media engagement. That's really all I have to say. I'm gonna look at the proposed logos and then.
Great. I, I don't know, I, I, you know, I can't answer all of your questions. I haven't seen what you're referring to. So I think we'll, we'll take your information and I think it's, it's good feedback for us.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So Brian, could we go to slot, the next slide, please? So, Ryan, could we go to slot, the next slide, please? Thank you so much. I don't know if you can make that larger? Thanks so much. Perfect, perfect. And so I, I want to share, so we at our prior school committee meeting shared two images, they are the image that is, it says option two and option three. So the lightning, there are lightning bolts with W's, one is with a shield and one is without a shield. And so those are two that we presented here at school committee in our last meeting and Tom was the chair at the time, and I think the recommendation was to, to take these and to get feedback, right? Correct me if I'm off, right? To take these and get feedback. And so, but we also heard that, is there any chance that we could take the images and kind of insert not a W with a lightning bolt, but a more traditional W? And so these images were created by Morgan Ginotti, right? One of our artists here at the high school. She does graphic artwork commercially and so does this professionally and put these together, I think some of the time in school, I think sometime outside of school. And so, but she created the two and when we asked for another image, just as a comparative reference with a W, she provided what was option one. And after the last school committee meeting, Tom had shared, is there any way for us to get feedback from kids? We were on a pretty short timeline, so we, we did our best and I have to credit Amy McLeod. If you go back to slide one, Ryan, please? What you see there is kind of the, the numbers of students in grades eight through 12. Earlier, a year ago, when we put forward three images, we had students in eight through 12 participate and, and you can see the breakdown in numbers of students that participated. I want to say our overall number of students, this is like an eye test, I can see it here, and so 562 responses. So we had 562 people participate, which is amazing for the last day of school. It's amazing that Amy McLeod and Meg Webb coordinated this and got 562 students to participate. What I find amazing is that the 12th graders who graduated weeks before, 32 participated. And students could only participate once, just for the record, because that's often a question that we get. And so participation, the rates were really high and if, if, now, Ryan, you go back to slide two, please? You'll see the pie graph at that, on the second half of that sheet, you'll see that the students overwhelmingly, 60% of which preferred option one, which is the traditional W with Wakefield Warriors kind of in a circle around the W, right? And so again, all of these images were provided by Morgan Ginotti and so, so we got, we feel like we're making good progress here, right? And so we're not surprised that the students prefer the W. It was, it's, they preferred a W in a prior survey, or a W concept in a prior survey, so not surprised by this. Kind of a late change was Morgan reached out today just to spice up the conversation to say, you know, hey, I know everyone's looking at the, the W and we're talking about, and I've gotten feedback from several people, you know, Pete has given me feedback around the font and, you know, curious if we can change the font and, you know, the colors of the outer ring, and I got some feedback from Brendan Kent and Tom Banker, you know, and they, they were very thoughtful, they had said, you know, and, and they would hope that the school committee would approve, you know, one concept and if they were going to, if the club, for example, clubs and sports, we're going to take those and make it club-specific or sport-specific, that they would do so with guidance, for example. They wouldn't change the concept if we were to go with option one, you know, if hockey wanted to make it their own logo and they were to put hockey sticks in the middle of the W. I think that's, you know, making an iteration of the concept that just doesn't change the concept, but makes it sport-specific. Or were to take a treble clef and put it in the middle of the W for music and performing arts. So that's, that's something that was discussed and I think feedback that we got is, you know, instead of trying to control all of the colors, that we agree to a few colors that we're going to create with an image and then give the, give athletics and fine and performing arts the latitude to make changes based on, on maybe the color of the shirt that it's on, or if they're, if they're creating T-shirts or hats or sweatshirts, depending on the color of those, that they might make the W black instead of red, right? And I feel like those are reasonable requests. So in, in, hearing from Morgan today, Morgan had shared that she spent quite a bit of time on the lightning bolt W's and the, the, the W concept that she put together, I think if she felt like that was a different ask of her and, and so she's been given a lot of thought to this. And so she said that that looks a little, her, her opinion, and I don't, and I, and I wish she was on the call, but she shared that it, it looks like letterhead, it doesn't quite jump out at her. So what she did today, right, which is a, kind of like a plot twist, if you go to the third image, third slide, please? Ah, there it is. So the third image? In the column on the right? Yeah. So Morgan sent this over today and said, you know, like, I understand this is late, please, I understand this is late, not trying to complicate anyone's life, we understand that, you know, administration has worked hard to get feedback from kids, but this is something that, you know, if we could consider this, this is a W concept, this has the shield similar to the student shield that was presented earlier in kind of the first round, so it has that connection. They, they felt it also, you know, when I said, hey, Morgan felt, and, and she got some feedback from a few faculty members, but she felt like this felt more like an athletic logo, right? And so I just want to be completely transparent with the committee to say, you know, I was prepared to come here this evening to, to ask or make a recommendation to the committee to move forward the W concept with the circle around it. But now with this, this change, you know, this complicates the conversation a bit, so, and, but to go back to a point that, you know, was made, it's been made many times, right? It's like in for a penny, in for a pound, right? We've gone this far, why not just really like be completely transparent, put it out there and, and just let the committee see it, think about it and really make a rec, so if you're looking for a recommendation from me, I, I, you know, I'm a little conflicted in regard to making that. If you need one tonight, I could make it, because that's my job, I feel like, but I think that this raises some other questions. And, and so I don't know what the committee thinks might be the best athletic logo for us moving forward for the next 120 years.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks. Since you, since you brought me into it at the beginning of your remarks, I'll, I'll certainly chime in. I guess in the big picture, my, my truth sense is that, you know, you know, we're, we're on a path to, to do this well. Regardless of the fact that it seems like we began this, this, this change 100 years ago, it was three years ago, I guess. But regardless of, of the, of the length of time, I think, you know, doing it well, that has the student, student voice, that has faculty and coaches and, and, and performing artists and community having a say is more, I think, more important than us having to vote tonight. I think, you know, and certainly a huge credit to, to Morgan, you know, her, oh, we're, we're, we're preparing a new survey line, live and living color. I think that iteration is terrific, I mean, it, and it can probably only be improved with some more creative energy around it. And so I don't, my truth, I don't see us needing to rush to a vote tonight. I think let, let the community look, look at a couple other suggestions that our graphic artist team led by our, led by our very competent and, you know, teaching staff. And to the, to that point, I think it, I think, you know, when she thought that logo one looked like a letterhead, it kind of does, it has more of a corporate feel to it than, than something that looks a little more student-oriented, a little more, a little more fun, a little more, you know, you know, more youthful than business cards. Anyways, I think we should continue without, without a, you know, without months of delay and probably ask, you know, Morgan to, to maybe stop at some point, so we can actually make a decision, but she seems to be on a bit of a roll and I think we should be mindful and respectful and appreciative of the work that she's doing at this time.
You, you bring up a really great point, one is the timeline, which I think, you know, we need to hear from Morgan on, right? And so if Morgan, I don't know what her availability is, I don't know, you know, I don't know if there would be, you know, a cost incurred, I know some of the other images, some of, some of, some was done in work, some was out of work, but the, I don't know, like, I, I just want to be clear about, you know, how we're proceeding and, and what we could expect, right? And so Morgan, a strength of Morgan is her artistic ability. A challenge for Morgan, she doesn't say no, right? So she says yes, 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 but then hot, it's, it's kind of like, she's fitting everything in, she has family, she has a young child, you know, she's, she's on vacation and, you know, is making phone calls and sending this image from vacation today. So, you know, I, I think those are things that I think we need to, to figure out as well. But if the committee is, I'm, I don't want to cut off anyone else's comments or thoughts.
Oh, does anyone, go ahead, Steven.
Yeah, I, it's a long process, I appreciate sort of the iterations, it feels like it's taken us a long time to sort of get to this point, but I think I can, I can draw lines directly from sort of the, the logo committee's work into sort of, you know, what came out of that into Morgan's work and to what we're seeing now. And so there's a part of me that, that wants to sort of continue the discussion and that I like that she brought the shield back and that it was in her, the lightning bolt iteration and it was a student design from the logo, like I see some, some things that sort of moved through this. And then there's the other part of me, so in talking in some kids that I know, but they all tend to be of elementary age, you know, they kind of like the pop of the, of the shield with the lightning and the way that Warriors stands out, it's a much more like graphic, it does not look like letterhead. And so I was, I was really glad to get the, the poll back and see, because my, my sphere is small, it's, the response rate left me feeling really good. I was glad that the one that maybe my kids were leaning towards was place number second, that, that's good, that's not completely, so, and that, but then to see Morgan come back with sort of the, the shield again and that, the type that I liked, I like it, I just feel like the students sort of put us in a direction. And that's where, that's where I get stuck in. And I don't necessarily want, I, I don't think we can do another poll, I don't want this to wait till September, I think there are probably some, some groups within our district that are waiting for, to make T-shirts or whatever, or, you know, whether it's band or it's hockey or it's football, whatever.
Eileen is waiting to square away you talking. No pressure, Steven.
Waiting to square away you talking.
So I, I, yeah, I mean, I lean towards sort of if, if you, if you had an impression. I, I don't know what else we would gather from, I don't know where else we would get the data from.
Oh, go ahead. Do you want us to answer that question or?
Oh, you can answer the question.
Steven, do you want us to answer, or were you just saying?
No, I was going to ask a question.
Oh, do I want us to answer that question? No. I, I think we, I think we, yeah, it's sort of like, yeah, rhetorical, sorry.
Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start by saying I really appreciate all the effort Morgan has put into this. I get the sense she, she's really energetic about continuing to help us iterate on this and get to something that we all love in the end. And when I say we, I mean the community as a whole. In terms of next steps, I do think there's an opportunity to ask a question again, I mean, we, we now have a completely different looking logo than we had before and we don't have any student or community input yet as to what they think of this new design. There was definitely some, I would say, not so positive feedback with the lightning bolt W, not so positive feedback with kind of the, the, you know, the noise on the original shield, so I do think some feedback would be helpful. And then, you know, I, I did provide some feedback that I had received, I'd received a bunch of feedback, just in some ideas for the W, just as another, some refinements to look at on top. So in terms of next steps, I'd love to see some refinement on option one and then maybe show the original option one, maybe an adaptation of option one and this new Warriors thing together, give the opportunity for community feedback, give the opportunity for any student feedback we can get over the summer and then decide based on that if we can give some, you know, if we have some feedback to give to Doug on at least, on thoughts on which path we'd like Morgan to kind of continue to work on, that would be my thought.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Wait, you want an adaptation on one of these?
Yes, yeah.
So that, so that.
You want a fifth?
Well, no, so I would get rid of two and three, I think they've been rejected by, by both the students and the community, so I don't think we need to look at those anymore. So take two and three off and then look at a version of one that has some feedback that was given on it and the current version of this new option four and get feedback as to what our students and our, and our community feels about them, because I.
How, how do we get the feedback?
I mean, I know how I would get it, but I, you know, I heard some feedback on that today, so.
Well, the, I think, well, what I was impressed that was able to happen was that Mr. McLeod and team were able to get a, a student survey out that got a huge number of respondents and that, to me, seems like that, that's the party, the body that we're perhaps most interested in is the, the kids who this is going to reflect, or, you know, their feelings on it. And it feels even, maybe it's just geared towards the kids that respond to emails. But outside, I'm worried about outside of school, we're not going to get an even, yeah.
I mean, my view, and I think Doug said it well, like, we spent a lot of time on this, I don't think we should rush to finish. I think this project has taken so much energy, it deserves whatever additional time it takes to get it right in the end. So I think we try to see how many students we can reach over the summer, if we can't reach them, then we just, you know, the reality is that the, the feedback we got was pretty convincing in one way, so whether you get feedback from 500 students or, or 200, you may get the same feedback, so, you know, I, I, that'd be my recommendation. My recommendation would do a little refinement on one, give three more options, getting rid of two and three, based on the feedback we have, and hopefully give Morgan some guidance to inspire us with some last version based on whatever direction people tell us. I mean, the student feedback told us option one, it didn't tell us the shield based on the feedback we got. So for us to now say, oh, we're just going to go do a shield, maybe they love it, I don't know, I'd love to hear their feedback.
Anybody, oh, go ahead, Tom.
I think I fall somewhere in between what you guys are suggesting and harkening back to Doug's comments a moment ago. I think we could, I would interpret from the student survey of options one, two and three, as much a dismissal of the lightning bolt W versus really, that, that to me is the feedback, looking at, I think Doug called it a traditional W, if I don't want to put words in your mouth, Doug, I think that's what he said, but something that's much more of a traditional W that could stand strong and powerful on its own, whether that's option one or now option four for the sake of calling it something. I think we see a powerful W in, in, in Morgan's design of today or yesterday, whenever, whenever that came into the mix. I, I would agree that we can't, you know, in any concrete way or any solid way get another student feedback going, but I think if we take the feedback and say. But I think if we take the feedback and say, you know, looking for a strong W that could stand on its own and be a powerful representation, that is a font that we can either call our own or not be someone else's. Then I think, and, and give a timeline respectfully to Morgan to say, we need you to stop because you've really done some great work for us, but we need to land on a decision. And make the, make some of the refinements that Pete is suggesting and community members are suggesting. And maybe see some iterations of what would it look like with lacrosse sticks? What would it look like with a treble cove, a treble clef, rather? Because I think, you know, Dr. Lyons, what you said early on was about sports teams and athletics and, and performing arts and even clubs. Being able to take this and, and, you know, have some creative elements that, that stay consistent and have some liberty. I mean, we've, we've certainly supported plenty of liberty with the last couple of logos. Out with the Native American faces, be it the cartoon one or even the ones before that. We had, we allowed the liberty to, you know, change to fit whatever the student sport or club was. I don't see why we certainly wouldn't support that creative energy again. But, but I certainly will want to kick this can down the road too much further. Maybe, you know, maybe one meeting, but...
So Amy McLeod is with us. Hi.
Hello, Principal McLeod.
Thank you for joining us. I didn't know if you wanted to...
Hi.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I didn't know if you had any comments.
No, thank you. Yeah, I, I hear the discussion and I know it's a, it's a process that's been going on for a while now. And I think it was great that we were able to get this student feedback in a timely manner. I agree with the feedback that's talked about here that it would be ideal to get student feedback. To me, student voice in this process is the most important piece. Especially, you know, students who are, who are using this logo for all kinds of things, right? It's not just our teams and clubs. It's the kids who are in the hallways every day. It's amazing to me how many, how many high schoolers have so many pieces of clothing with Wakefield's right logos and things on it. So I, I think it's important. I don't know if we can gather that data over the summer. Students aren't great about checking their emails over the summer. Who can blame them, really? But certainly if that's the direction you want to move in, I, I think it's important. Mr. Markham, the thing that you just said about the adaptability of the logos, I think that both of them have that. And I agree with you in the past that we really have allowed not only our school groups to adapt a logo to use for their clubs and organizations. Boosters use them as well, community groups. So I think it's going to happen. And I, I think with the number one that the students chose and the one that Morgan is putting forward now, I can see, you know, field hockey sticks or soccer balls or treble clefs or whatever it is being incorporated into either of those. And I like the idea of giving the groups the ability to do that as long as the basis of the logo is, is consistent, which, you know, that happened before. We weren't pleased with the basis of the logo, so we made that change. And I think that that adaptability will happen no matter what, what's chosen. So that's my quick feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I agree with the other committee members about giving the time to like, look at what has been presented now. I do not agree with kicking it down the road past summer into fall and doing this another year. Because if we say like, well, we've already been doing this for three years, what's another? I don't want to do that. So I think if you leave it open and you say, hey, all of our emails are public. Email us with your feedback. Leave it open for the next, what, three weeks we have between now and the next meeting? Two or three weeks? And then we vote in the next meeting.
So I agree with that.
That's my suggestion.
I actually was thinking that we keep all four. Send a survey to what, you can check, they check TikTok, they can check their email just as quickly. Get whatever student feedback we can. You can even send a note to the parents. We have that mailing list. Like, we've sent a survey to the students. We're, we're in our last... Because I'd be curious if some of the numbers actually drop for the, the lightning bolt. And they actually like, oh, wow, we like this option better. I would be, I'd be curious about that. That's, go ahead.
So I like your idea. Just out of curiosity, why would we keep option two and three even on the table if they've been rejected already?
Well, they haven't been rejected. They just had a lower amount of, I would just be curious if those even drop more. But that's just me being curious. We could drop them and just go one and four.
That'd be, my proposal would be one or some adaptation of one and four.
I don't know if the decision's mine to make, so do we, do we make a motion or, or is it your decision?
At the end of the day, her policy. The superintendent should make a recommendation.
I'm sorry.
Curious if he...
Yes, I'm curious. What's your recommendation?
Oh, did anyone else want to speak, Kevin? No? The side of the table's way too quiet.
Me? Quiet?
I'm kidding.
Kevin?
No, I mean, I don't know if there's much more to add, I think, than what's already been said. It's been a really long process. And I concur with this caller in here, like, we need to come to a conclusion stat. And, you know, it's really, really quickly. I don't particularly like one. I get that that's where the students went, you know, particularly with the options that were there. I'm particularly intrigued by this fourth option that's now been presented. I totally concur with, with Mr. Markham that I think there, the objection was to the lightning bolt more than anything. So I think that that's been pretty soundly discouraged for, in a lot of different ways, from a lot of different audiences. So I think, you know, number one does nothing for me other than, you know, I think the cleaner W, which I think is captured in number four and which has a lot of possibilities to be manipulated in ways to do everything that everyone said for all the different groups and organizations. So that's where I would kind of lean towards. If we want to solicit a little bit more, just to feel really confident, I think that's fine. But I think it can't go beyond the next meeting. I won't be here. But it can't be, it can't go beyond the next meeting. I think we have to leave July with a logo for our community.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm just a little worried that... I'm just a little nervous that we're going to come in next meeting and there's going to be another logo.
Oh, no, we can ask.
Yeah, I think that can't be.
We can, we can ask Morgan, too.
I kind of want to, I'd like, like, whatever motion we make today, I kind of want it. I don't know if this sounds a little extreme, but I kind of want to cap it. Like, make a decision on what we're going to vote on next meeting. Is that fair or not fair?
I guess the question is, are we voting on, it absolutely has to look like that? Or are we allowing our artists to have some freedom to work within whatever, in these two things? Because if you're saying she can work within the two ideas, I'd be fine with that. But if you're saying there can't be any modifications, it has to be exactly what's on the screen here? That would worry me because I don't like one as it is, as it is either.
But I think Doug had started almost by saying that there would be iterations. Even when we land on a final, there'd be, there'd be room for some changes depending on the, the group that was using it. Their color palette, their, you know, but it would, it would stay truthful to an idea.
Yeah.
But there, there could be some room to change some colors, some tweaks here and there. Accurate?
That's accurate. So, I mean, so the question I'll ask is, do we want an additional set of feedback on number four from either students or the community? Or is the body ready to make a vote based on some recommendation tonight?
Oh, we have time before our next meeting to get feedback. But, um, but it should just be on one and four. We could kindly ask Morgan, like, thank you, like, we're, we're good. I think we're in a good place. I, I'm actually excited about option four. But I don't want to be selfish. So it would be, and I don't have to, I'm not a student. So if we could just, do you think we could send, send a survey even though the results might be low?
I don't... So I think, you know, in terms of students, you know, I think Amy, you know, Amy essentially made, Amy and Meg are the ones that, that got that participation, right? Like, they went out and, and kind of, they went out and got this, this data, right? And so I think one of the questions that I have, so you're going to have kids that are going to be able to answer email and then kids that aren't? Because this is going to be sent via email. I, I think we could give it a go and send out another two with a little disclaimer to say we've gotten feedback from the artist. We have, you know, options two and three are out. We're looking at one and four. Please provide any feedback that you'd like. But I, I just want to be clear, right? And so, you know, so if we're, so are we sending out? I would like to send out these images or I would like to give permission to Amy or ask Amy and Meg Webb for their support and help to get feedback on one and four as presented, right? And so, you know, this idea of, you know, making changes or, you know, Morgan needs a week to, you know... Again, she's on vacation. I want to be very respectful of her time and, and again, and all the work she's done. So I think, I, I would like to, I, I agree. I don't think, I think getting, getting this, getting into August is a can of worms. I think if we could get this done on July 18th, I think we could do that. I think we could take items one and four.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we can use our social media accounts to advertise the surveys we mail. So parents can queue, parents, students to check email.
Amy, what do you think?
I was just gonna say that, Kara, that point about the social media. I definitely think, I mean, I can, the survey's done. It can be done in a minute. It can be, start to be sent out tomorrow. That's not a problem. I, I would just say, sort of speaking from the student perspective, I, I just want to be cautious, right? If, if, if we continue to put this out to students and continue to ask their feedback, then I'm always protective of student voice, right? Student voice can only be authentic if we respond to it authentically. So I have lots of opinions about these logos. I've had lots of opinions since the beginning. And I know that everybody sitting at the table does as well. I just want to be respectful of the student body. And I, I agree, we can get it out and we can put it through social media. I know Meg will do the same. I can work with her on that right away. Not a problem. I just, I really want to make sure that we're listening to what the students say and not, you know, to get too caught up in iterations and artistic work when it's really about what are the students asking for? What are they proud to put on their uniforms and on their T-shirts? To sort of represent the spirit of being a warrior, because I think it means a lot to them. So I, I just want to hold on to that. But yeah, I can, we can work within that timeline to get a survey out. And I liked the suggestions that people said. Amy, you talked about emailing the parents, letting them know that an email went out to kids to say to check the email. We can do all of those things. Not a problem.
I guess that you bring a good point. If we keep asking this, I mean, this is the third time we've gone to ask these students. And then let's just say 70 like the circle and 30 like option four. Are we, are we going to go, I just, like, are we definitely going to go with what the students say?
Yeah, I, sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with what Amy just said. If we're respecting student voice, we just had a survey. Was it over 500 students responded? What if only 150 respond? And let's say 100 vote for option four, 50 vote for option one. I mean, we have any evidence that that survey is more valid than the first survey? And if the answer is no, then we should vote option one. Case closed, done deal, if we're going for student voice, right? So that's where this, that's where this is dangerous.
But I don't think anyone's arguing that. I don't think anyone's arguing against your point.
Right. So I just, so I'm just, so hopefully, like, like, we do another survey, like, the students vote, right? And hopefully we do get that amount of feedback.
Yeah.
Hopefully we do get 550. I'm just concerned, let's say, we don't, then do we come in July and be like, oh, my gosh, we had 500 vote on this day. We had 200 vote this day. Option four wasn't on the first vote. Take, how do we take all that together and realize what the student voice is? We have no, we would have no idea.
I'm apprehensive about sending out a survey and would prefer just, it's out in the public. If people are that passionate about it, they can email about it. That's part of my personal, right? Like, they could, they could, they, they really want to give feedback? I, I'm really apprehensive about sending another survey to students, especially during the summertime.
I do think that...
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Eileen, could we perhaps do both, right? Like, so getting a survey together, getting it out to the students, being mindful of what Kevin said about the, you know, how much feedback we get. I think, I think we can work hard to get as much feedback from students. And I think using social media and really getting it out there, we could get more or as much as we just got. And then if you want to get feedback from the community in another way, you could seek that out as well. I just, you know, I, I think we can get a lot of feedback. I just don't know. So, I mean, that, that's my only caution. And as long as the committee's aware of that, I think then you take the data that you get. And it's, it's feedback either way.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, as someone who requested feedback via email, I got zero emails. And I got about, I don't know, 50 to 100 responses on social media when what I requested was an email. So just some, some feedback on that.
Yeah, I think option four is a result of the feedback we've already received.
Yeah, I think the students made it clear that they prefer the street or the more traditional W in this survey, so...
So we're going to just call last one best one. Last, we promise is the last survey.
Last best one and four? Is that the motion?
I mean, I think we owe it to the students who told us they liked the circle. If, if the committee seems to like this option four, to see if the students are on board with that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'll bring in whatever community feedback we get. I'll request it be emailed again, but I may get 50 responses on social media instead, so...
Yeah, so, go ahead, Doug.
So these are all excellent, excellent points. I just following up on what the Principal McLeod said and in support of that. I, I think that, you know, we are not only asking, I mean, we're not making a decision exclusively based on, on feedback, right? We asked the art department, who's a professional artist by trade and profession and, and, you know, advocacy as well, to provide us with some good starting points. And I think she's done incredible work to bring us to these, these points. I will say again, respectfully, we need to tell her to stop because we're at some, you know, really good couple of, of points. And whatever feedback we, we may get from surveys, whether it's student surveys or community at large, I think we, we take all that into account. The administration puts it together for us and gives a recommendation at our, at our next meeting. And we, and we sort of tie this up. You know, Morgan may be able to, if she's available and interested and inclined to be able to show what some iterations may look like. But I don't think we need 100 more options. I think we need to give future users, student groups, clubs, the student store, some liberty to have some artistic license with the creativity around, you know, the, the basic logo. The basic logo being either the W in a circle or the W with the, with the shield. And allow for that liberty and allow for that expression. But I think we have to, we have to land, as I think folks are saying, we have to land, land there really soon. But I don't, I don't think we, we're going to, you know, if something is 70/30 and we really like it and the administration's feedback is, is, then I don't think we're bound by, you know, a, a survey result, especially because we've had moving targets.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing I made, I wanted to, I know I had one more thought. And Doug, and you kind of alluded to this, so I, I wanted just to, to say it, you know, publicly. So at least, so the committee can, can react. I think we need to be incredibly grateful to Morgan for the time that she's put in. I know this was a project that has been on her radar screen all year. It really took some, some lengths in the last month, month and a half. And she's done her, and I know the, the other, the other art teachers, the other members of the art department have really done some terrific work to bring us this far. I think we need to be incredibly grateful and mindful of that. If we are asking more work, as we are, or as we appear to be, in the, especially, you know, over the summer, then I think it would only be reasonable to compensate her for that work. I'm not quite sure how to land with a dollar amount, but I think that we're asking someone to do some additional work beyond the workday, beyond the work year and outside of the realm and, and tightening up some of our work. So I think it would be fair to compensate her. That's why you didn't, you, you kind of alluded to, the school year's over, you know, that type of thing. And I wanted to throw that out in case that becomes a, a question that one, I think we should appreciate and acknowledge the professional work that she has done and that as a professional artist, she should be compensated fairly.
I think I would like to suggest that we move forward in our survey with these... with these images as they are presented. So the reason I say that is because to, to kind of give them back over, right, I think prolongs the timeline. And, and really, I think if we end up with, if students end up with one or, or four, that's where we end up, or you get feedback that this is the best fit for us. We're gonna make a vote in the next meeting on July 18th. And then we've, we've kind of done our due diligence, right? I don't know that we can do more, right? And so, that, that's what I think I would hope we could do. Pete?
Yeah, I would agree with that, Doug. And the only question I have is, I just want to make sure we leave open the door for Morgan to make whatever artistic changes she wants to make in whatever these two things are. So say we go with four, she should have, you know, we should be able to see what she comes up with, but I don't want to say to her, you can't make any changes to this. It has to be exactly what we saw in the survey.
So is that, so is that before we send the survey or after?
After.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Not to beat a dead horse, but maybe, maybe to Pete's point, I don't, I don't, I don't mean it, but like, if we, there's an expectation that, or that there will be, you know, iterations of this. I think Morgan, now, I would, I would interpret that she's got some great pride in this work, as she should. And that, and if someone's gonna add a treble clef or, or hockey sticks, that, that she might be the person that want to be able to, to do that. I don't know that. I'm just saying that, that, you know, that's probably a good place for us to start if we're looking at what iterations are as opposed to taking the work, asking her to send us an Adobe file and we, we send it to a printer somewhere and all of a sudden it becomes something that the, the originator didn't intend.
I, I think I want to understand a little bit more around trademark, trademark and ownership, right? Because, you know, once these go to, to boosters, to teams, right? And so, you know, this idea that anytime an iteration is made, it's done, you know, through the, with the approval of the artist, I think.
No, that's not what I'm saying. So I'm glad you brought that up. This needs to be property of the Wakefield Public Schools. And whatever, and it needs, that's another reason, I'll say a lot, why compensation is appropriate.
Got it. Got it. Got it. So I, I think we have a path forward and so I appreciate the feedback. I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
If there are any more questions, we will move forward with a survey. And if, and if you all want to do your own in terms of getting feedback around images one and for we, whatever we share on social media, we will share with you so that you may also use the same kind of.
Wording.
Same wording and the same images to get feedback. Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna regret saying this. Is it worth, is it worth putting it to the item? Or, or maybe the item would just print it. But.
You can just tell us which one you like.
To sort of the point made earlier, that not everyone, not everyone, if we're seeking feedback, not everyone has access to the same media platforms, to the same individuals on social media, which is, which is why it can be a problem, how that, that feedback is, is gotten. But if we could cast a wide net. Yeah.
So I agree with that. Maybe we could do a press release to the item and ask them to print the press release.
Right there.
Possibly early next week.
One and four.
Okay. Yeah. So let's just make sure we get them the high quality versions of it so he has the best stuff to print. Great.
Oh, you got, you have one more?
Next up, student data. We only have 38 slides for this.
We can just, we'll go as quickly as we can. This was, I know this was a request of the committee to have this information. We did scale it down. We'll try to move quickly. Doug said two slides, we got to 10.
I didn't, I, I apologize, Marguerite, Lindsay and Val. I, I didn't realize we had you waiting in the wings. I would not have been so verbose.
Which logo do you guys like?
So, yeah, can I, can you guys hear us, first of all? Okay. Yeah. So I'd like to start just introducing, you've met before Lindsay Mosca, who's been our five to 12 math curriculum coordinator. She is making a shift to elementary STEM curriculum coordinator for the 23, 24 school year. We have Valerie Drynan, who has been our elementary STEM curriculum coordinator and will be our elementary humanities curriculum coordinator next year. And Marguerite Patterson, who is our math curriculum, math coach district wide at all four of our elementary schools. So they've helped me out in response to the request from the committee that we present around student growth data related to our math implementation. So we've put together some slides to highlight that. We'll also weave in some accelerated math data updates as well. And we know it's been a long night and we will, we sent this to everybody ahead of time. Tried to capture whatever early questions that you had in the slide, but if there's other questions, let us know. Okay. All right. Lindsay, are you getting started?
I'm getting started. No, I was gonna start. Sorry. No, are you, am I getting started now? You can't remember anymore.
Yeah, I know, it's a little late.
You had it all about to. All right. So thanks for having us again. We wanted to start off, I'm gonna, could try to keep our talking point short here, but we wanted to start off sharing just the data we got from our HQIM grant from DSE. They had us do a landscape analysis with a consultant called the Teaching Lab to look at our implementation and give us some feedback and help us create an implementation plan to continue our work going forward. So we'll be applying for that extension grant as well as support the implementation around PDE and, and coaching support in math. So what they had us do as part of the landscape analysis was conduct a teacher survey. So the data you see here comes from the teacher survey. So 83 of our teachers participated in the survey. And as you can see here from the results, one of the things we were most excited to see out of this in year two, we're still very early on in the implementation. It, you know, three to five years is what they typically say takes for, you know, to see full, to see some, some results. So we are hopeful, based on what we are seeing here, that many of our teachers are, well, this one is specifically about usage of the material, sorry. So there's a really high percentage of our teachers that are using the materials every single day, not highly modifying them due to not seeing the need to do that. And that was part of the goal of our, one of our year two goals around materials was really using the materials as they were designed to support all of our students. We can move to the next slide. So this next slide is from the same survey and it talks, this one looks at the teachers, our Wakefield teachers' feelings about the materials and how they support their students. So you can see here, the majority of our teachers are, are in either the strongly agree or agree that these curriculum materials are, that were adopted, will meet the needs of their students. So this slide here is from our iReady diagnostic assessment. So the iReady diagnostic assessment we take in grades K through eight, we added kindergarten this year based on feedback from the kindergarten teachers. So this is our diagnostic we take three times per year. So we take it once in the fall, once in the winter and once in the spring, all grades K to eight except grade two this year, did winter and spring only as a first year trial. So on this chart here, the green represents students, the percentage of students that are on or above grade level. The yellow represents students that are one grade level below and the red represents students that are two or more grade levels below. So as you can see here in our triangles coming from the assessment, these are from our end of year assessments in 2021, 22 and 2022, 23. Our number of students below grade level has decreased and our number of students on or above has increased. So that is what we want to see, obviously. So next slide. So just, I'm about to pass it over to Marguerite. So we just kind of wanted to frame that in saying that one of our hopes in adopting this curriculum and one of the reasons we chose this curriculum was that we, in our review, we determined this curriculum would meet the needs and challenge students that are in need of more challenge, that were already performing above or on grade level and support our students who were not yet at grade level. So Marguerite's about to show some data from the elementary that, talk a little more about that.
Yep. So the next two slides speak to achievement and growth in elementary grades. There's a typo at the heading of this slide. It should say beginning of year versus end of year diagnostic data. So what we're looking at here is over the course of this past full year, the number of students on or above grade level in each grade increased and the number of students performing two or more grade levels below their own grade decreased in each grade level. It's worth noting here that the threshold for being on grade level is higher at the end of the year than at the beginning of the year. So this data indicates not only that students are learning, but that many students who started out not on grade level were able to get there. And those who started there learned a whole bunch in order to stay at grade level. The table on the left corresponds with what Val showed on the previous slide. The green table just indicates that those are the students who came in on grade level and then the percentage of students who ended on grade level. And you can see that that's increasing. And then the red, the table with the red heading is showing that those are the students who began the year two or more grade levels below their current grade level. By the end of the year, that number was smaller in each grade level. The next slide really speaks to the growth that we're seeing across the district. So every grade level in the chart on the right, every grade level each year for the past three years, we're seeing an increase in the median growth. And some highlights from the grade levels in grade one, 13% more students who benchmarked the beginning of the year one grade level below met their stretch growth goal. iReady chooses two growth goals, an annual typical growth goal and then a stretch growth goal that's more than a year's worth of growth that a student would need to meet a few years in a row to kind of get back on grade level. In grade two, 12% more students who benchmarked early on grade level this year met their growth goal compared to last year. In grade three, 22% more students who benchmarked at or above grade level in the fall met their growth goal. And in grade four, 10% more students who benchmarked two grade levels below met their stretch growth goal. So like Val mentioned, one of our goals is to have a curriculum that meets the needs of kids who are struggling and kids who are performing on grade level or excelling. And this data really suggests that we're going in the right direction and serving all of those students.
Excellent. So I'm gonna take over talking about grades five to 12. And so this particular chart is showing the achievement from the beginning of your diagnostic, which is the bottom slightly more translucent bar to the end of your diagnostic. You can see significant gains in how many students are in that green range at, at or above grade level and a decrease in students who are below grade level. It's worth noting that we're seeing in our data, especially in grades seven and eight, a decrease in, in sort of scores, not in a way that indicates that kids are achieving less, but in a way that as they get older, they take the assessment less seriously. And I actually had a couple of conversations with a few colleagues in districts nearby us that also use this assessment and they're seeing the same thing in middle school grades. You know, so part of what we're doing, moving forward into next year is making sure that we have some systems and structures to make sure we're getting good data, especially from our upper middle school students. And so I don't think for a second that we have, you know, 13% of our students, you know, benchmarking two or more grade levels below at the middle school, but we do have a little bit of implementation concern, which is common across other middle schools in the area. But there is some great growth with kids on grade level. This next slide is really talking about some of the achievements in growth that we've seen from 2021, 22 to 22, 23. And so those first two years of implementing new curriculum. And so in comparing from last year to this year, we saw a 3% decrease in students who are benchmarking below grade level. So even with implementation concerns of the actual iReady assessment, we are seeing a decrease in students benchmarking below grade level. We did see a 9% increase in students who are benchmarking mid or above grade level moving from one year to the next, which is a really great thing to see. In terms of stretch growth goals in the middle school, similar to how Marguerite talked about it, that means that students who are making that goal are learning more than one year's worth of expected growth. And so of students who started the year placing below grade level, there was a 5% increase in the number who met their stretch growth goal. And so that means from last year into this year, we're seeing an increase in students placing below grade level, meeting a stretch growth goal, using this new curriculum, which is really great news and a good sign that we're moving in the right direction to support kids who are struggling in middle school math. And then we also saw a 7% increase in the number of students who start the year benchmarking at or above grade level, who also meet their stretch growth goal from one year to next. And so that means that our students who are starting the year benchmarking at or above grade level are learning more than one year's worth of content and showing that on their iReady assessment. And that was a 7% increase from 21, 22 to 22, 23, which we're really excited to see. In terms of accelerated math in grade seven, as we reported last time, we talked about how many students were anticipating taking accelerated math. We now know that there were 100 students currently signed up to take grade eight algebra for next year with an additional 19 not included in that number. There are 30 kids enrolled in the program, but there are some of them who are already qualified for algebra and are gonna take the program anyways to advance their skills. And so there's 19 additional ones enrolled in that summer program hoping to take algebra next year. So we have a potential for 119 students taking algebra. We saw a 4% increase in seventh graders placing mid or above grade level on iReady compared to those same student scores in sixth grade. So we are seeing more of the, that same cohort of students achieving mid or above grade level on their benchmark assessments. And we also saw a 9% increase from last year into this year in seventh grade students who started on grade level and met their stretch growth goals. You know, which means that we, with what we did this year in grade seven, we reached more students than in the previous year to meet their stretch growth goals when they started on grade level at the beginning of the year. In terms of grades nine to 12, we do not use iReady in grades nine to 12. The Algebra I course is moving next year into year three of using new curriculum for the 23, 24 school year. Geometry is moving into using year three as well. They really were supposed to be in year one this year, but most of them got on board a year early, which was really great. So they're also moving into year three. Algebra II is a course we'll be using new curriculum in the first, for the first time next year, adjusting our scope and sequence. We had a great kickoff meeting on Monday with the whole team, really getting going on scope and sequence and learning that curriculum. More summer work is planned in preparation throughout the summer. And in the spring 2023, forecast results, which will be available come the fall, will reflect students in, who were in grade 10 last year that used illustrious mathematics for two years in high school. And so we're excited to see those results and see how that compares to some prior data.
That's it. We were quick. Nice job. But of course, we're open to questions, you know.
I'm curious if you looked at any data pre-COVID to compare how we're, you know, how these same benchmarks should be prior? Obviously, the, the news is all good coming from 2021 to 2022, 2023. I'm just curious, is it just as good if you go back pre-COVID or where, how does it line up in that regard?
I mean, to be quite honest, we don't really have a lot of data from iReady compared to that because we were using it not in many grade levels in, in a first year of implementation that year. And so, you know, there's not a lot that's actually super comparable. I, I think we were only using in the middle school for that time. And so moving forward, like, we don't have across the school comparisons to be able to make with iReady data. But I think, you know, in the, the 2021, 2022 school year, that was a full school year, you know, where kids were in school every single day and using new curriculum as well. And so I think it is a pretty good comparison, seeing how they're doing from that year to the next. Yeah, we started iReady in third and fourth grade officially in the 2021, 2021 year. The 2019 year, we had kicked it off with some PDE for teachers. And then when things shut down, we didn't, we, we didn't have the rest of the data for that year, so.
Was that it? Kevin?
On your third slide with the pyramids, that's looking at the iReady K through eight. So is that just an, is that just an average of all the kindergarten, the cohort kindergarten through eighth grade for those years? So that's taking nine grades.
Yep.
For each pyramid. Okay.
Yep, that's the, that's the entire school district that has used iReady. It's important to note that in the 21, 22 pyramid, kindergarten is not in there because that was new for this year. But otherwise, it is every grade level that we use. The way that our reports come from iReady, we can get every student in the district who takes it and we can do it by school or by grade level. And so like, for instance, I can show a grades five to eight summary of all students in the middle school because it's one school, but for instance, we don't have the ability to show those same graphics for the K to four grade band because it's four different schools. It's something we're gonna ask iReady about if we can kind of get that on our dashboard. But right now, in K to four. But right now, in K to four, we have the ability to see it by grade level across the entire district or by school.
Okay, also on those pyramids, is this students taking this at the beginning of the year? Is it students taking it at the end of the year? Or is this looking at all three I Ready tests that were taken over the course of the year?
No, that is the final diagnostic for any student who took it in those two years. So it is apples to apples in terms of the two school years. Save kindergarten was not in that first year. But that is the same assessment, end of year diagnostic.
The end of the year, the end of the year diagnostic, okay.
Yep.
Thank you for putting this together. It's a lot of information, and I really appreciate looking at it. I'm, I'm curious, looking at sort of the, the numbers on how many students achieved at higher levels on grade level, beginning of year to end of year, and then also the students that decreased beginning of year, end of year. The, the number, they look great, right? So, so there's more kids on grade level, there's less kids that are below grade level. But I'm looking for sort of the information that's, how much of this do you think is reflective on our new curriculum? I think is what I'm getting to. I'm assuming you had some amount of data from the previous, before illustrative math, the previous curriculum. In your curriculum goals, did these numbers increase and decrease to where you're, you're feeling satisfied with sort of the road that we're on with this curriculum change?
So I think it's, it's a really difficult question to ask because I Ready was not something we were using across the board in all these grade levels previously, right? And so like, we were using it in some ways, and we can compare some parts. And you are right that there are a whole ton of confounding variables here, and we really do not have the kind of data that allows us to really say like, yeah, this is the exact reason, right? Like, it's very difficult to do that. But what we do know is that I Ready is a grade level standards-based assessment. And part of the work that we've done with this new curriculum is teaching content that is on grade level to the standards teachers are supposed to be teaching in that year. You know, we had a lot of vertical alignment issues, which was part of our curriculum review analysis a few years ago. And we do know that with such high usage with teachers and using those lessons and teaching grade level aligned standards, that this is what we're expecting to see. We're expecting to see that kids are growing in their grade level and achieving better because it's also a universally designed curriculum. As teachers proficiency grows in terms of using those differentiation strategies in the instructional routines, we're expecting to see even more growth for students who struggle and our students who are above because that is the curriculum as it was designed. And so we're not, we're pleased with these results, and we're not necessarily surprised. You know, the thing I think we are surprised about is how great it looks only two years in. You know, usually putting a new curriculum and doing something like that, it takes some time to get there. And while we have work to do as a district to improve our implementation, we're seeing some really promising results so far. You know, we are excited to see how MCAS results come out in the fall. You know, we're not necessarily expecting miracles, but we're expecting improvement. And it's always such a tough waiting game to, to see when it's come out.
Can I just add on there too, Lindsay? I think, Stephen, the one that, that was exciting to me as we were going through and pulling this data for this presentation was on slide six, when you had, it's only for grades three and four right now that you can see it because we weren't using it in K to two in that 2020, 21 year. But you can see the percentages during that year, and I know it was not a normal year. But then year one of that implementation, it was such a drastic shift as well. So that was exciting to see. And then like Lindsay said, I think once we see the MCAS, it'll be, that's going to be more comparable because we have pre-implementation and pre-COVID MCAS that we can compare to MCAS that comes out this year.
And if I can just add one really small thing in, like, to this question of, like, how much of this is the curriculum? I think it's really important to remember that the curriculum, like, we have invested, you have invested in a great, high-quality curriculum resource, and that is like the foundation. And it's really hard to pull apart, like, now that we have a high-quality curriculum resource, it's hard to pull that apart. And from all of the work that's being done in addition, right? Like, the professional learning, the work that this team has done and continues to do in just like building relationships and having ongoing conversations with teachers to help build the capacity to use new instructional strategies and align with standards and build content knowledge. And so I think those things go hand in hand.
That, thank, thank you. Yeah, I didn't mean to distill it down to one thing. It is, it is definitely part of a process, and you do it well. So thank you for that reminder.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
If we look at the fifth slide real quick?
I don't have the numbers, tell me if I'm wrong. No, I don't have it up. I was trying to guess, but I think.
Beginning of the year.
Is this five?
End of the, yeah.
This one, yeah.
Thank you. So I just, I was just unclear on what this was actually saying. So if you look at that left-hand side, let's say grade three, where it says fourteen percent at beginning of the year, what does that mean? Does that mean eighty-six percent of third graders aren't on grade level? Or, oh, yeah, I just.
At the beginning of.
Okay, so that means fourteen percent of third graders in this school year were proficient for a grade three standards, meaning what they should be at the end of the year, grade three, when they took that test at the beginning of the year. That's not.
Okay.
All right, so tell me what that fourteen percent means.
Go ahead.
So it's a little bit tricky because, and Lindsay, you're probably gonna, I can let you jump in here too. Because fourteen percent at, in their initial diagnosis at the beginning of the year scored on or above grade level. The diagnostic is adaptive, so it adjusts with the students as they're taking, as they're answering questions, right? So grade three students all start at a similar place, and then the test increases the challenge of the questions or decreases them depending on how they answer. So they're scoring, fourteen percent of students are scoring at or on or above grade level for grade three at the beginning of the year on this chart. Go ahead, Lindsay, you want to?
Yeah. On top of the fact that the test adapts for individual students, there's also the score that qualifies as early on grade level for grade three in September is lower than what qualifies for on grade level at the end of the year. And so when you're looking at a fourteen percent grade three, that means that the beginning of the school year, fourteen percent of kids were benchmarking on or above grade level for grade three from a beginning of the year situation, right? And then throughout the course of the year, they learned lots of grade three things, right? And then they were able to achieve staying on or above grade level or increase their score to be able to maintain that benchmark ability. So they, that means that we had a really big increase in grade three in students who are showing proficiency in grade three materials in the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And so the test is, is very clever in complicated understanding. So you're, you're absolutely on target asking these sorts of clarifying questions, for sure.
No, wait, no, 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 I, I do not get it. I'm going back. Are you saying that, because, because though that, that graph makes it seem like, like we are just breaking records? Like, we are ju, like, okay. So grade three, when those kids take that test, eighty-six percent of them are not at grade level where they're supposed to be when they take that test at that time.
Well, they haven't learned the material yet, so they still have a whole year to learn.
Right, so my first question, so, right, so that's, that's the material they should know at the end of grade three, when they master all the grade three material. So that means.
Go ahead, Val, jump in.
So like, Lindsay, it's, it's tricky to like, explain the assessment. So they, basically, there's a beginning of the year benchmark. So the fourteen percent are the students that were at the grade three beginning of year benchmark. So it doesn't mean they knew all the grade three, like, it doesn't mean it's the end of year grade three expectations at the beginning of the year. The other important thing to note here is like, if a student at the end of grade two, so there's like the three-level placement that's in the triangle that you guys saw, the green shows on or above grade level. But there's actually a five-level breakdown that shows like a dark green, which means that they're above and on or above, and the light green, that's like early on. And so if they end the year in second grade, early on second grade level, they're gonna likely score in the yellow as a one grade below at the beginning of the year because they're coming, they're not quite at second grade level even though they're green at the end because it's not quite at the end of your second grade expectation. Does that break it down a little bit more?
Yes. Now, now you're.
You're us trying to like, talk it out when we're doing this data.
No, 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 this is, this is, this is good stuff. Can you, can you, and maybe this is a helpful question, or maybe it's just gonna, gonna throw the whole thing off. Can you draw a relationship between end of year grade two and beginning of year grade three?
Yes, if a student has not had any kind of like summer slide, right? A student who benchmarks at the end of grade two with an early on grade level designation, right? Would get a, a, a green sticker on their I Ready, and they're early on grade for grade two. And then if they lose no learning over the summer and they take the assessment in the beginning of grade three, they will benchmark yellow as in one grade level below because they have not shown mastery fully of the grade two content at the beginning of grade three.
So it doesn't break it down in the yellow to like late grade two or early grade two or mid-grade two. So yellow when it says one grade level below, it doesn't mean every kid in yellow is fully a full grade level below. They could be just a little bit below, or they could be like further below in that, within one grade level. It's a lot.
The way, the way I explain it to teachers a lot of times is if you have students who answered the same questions, like Lindsay just said, the kind of, if you, if they happen to take the test the exact same way on September 20th that they took it in June, if they were light green, which is like, we see five colors when we look at it our way, but if they were light green on grade level, but like not solidly end of the year grade level right now, and they took it again in September, they'd be showing up as yellow. And so there's an aspect of, like, knowing that those are end of year numbers always look a little lower. And there's an aspect of like really good growth in these numbers as well.
You can keep going.
Okay, thank you, okay. So if I have an incoming fourth, okay, so if I have a kid going into fourth grade as a parent, right? Which, which I do. So let's say that kid, my kid, let's say got a green, what'd you say, star, check? At the end of grade three.
Their benchmark color.
Yeah, their benchmark. So let's say that kid got a check or a star at the end of year grade three. Let's say I'm a horrible parent that doesn't do any instruction. I'm like, just do whatever you want all summer, summer slide. I'm a summer slide parent, let's just say, I'm a summer slide parent. My kid comes in grade four, takes the beginning of the year assessment. Is there any way for like the parent to be able to know that that kid dropped and got the yellow? Or if their kid like kept on the green? Like, is, is there, is there any way for that, for a, for a parent to know that the summer slide happened and we're in trouble? Or maybe like not trouble, trouble, but like.
And add more parent guilt. I'm just kidding. We do, we do need to talk about how we communicate this information to parents. Like, that's definitely something that we brought up. It's kind of, I think, a next step goal for us is to think, first step was getting consistent assessments across the four schools so that we actually had information to work with. We're, we're having similar conversations related to ELA with the ELA implementation. Then it kind of throw COVID in the mix, you know, and then to kind of get in a consistent routine assessment schedule. And now I think we're feeling ready to think about how to thoughtfully communicate this information with parents. Because we, we, we all agree parents deserve to know, and they deserve this information related to their students, especially if it's driving, you know, intervention or instructional shifts. But it's a matter of how, I think where we want to do the work is, is trying to think about how to present it so parents understand it, you know, that they can wrap their heads around it, they understand what it means, how we're using it, and that sort of thing. But it is accessible. Like, if parents, I think that this has happened, if parents have asked us specifically, can I get this information? We'll provide it. But we're thinking about how to do that in a way that parents don't have to ask for it, that we're, we're doing it. Maybe aligned with.
Well, Kara, can I add on? Can I just add on what you're saying? Because I think, Kevin, what you said was like, if my student ends in green at the end of the year and comes, comes in at yellow at the beginning of the year, and like, would I be able to know, you know, they're in trouble? I think one thing to frame, that's part of what Kara is talking about in how we communicate the data, is understand like, if they end the year in light green and come in on yellow, that doesn't necessarily mean they're in like trouble or in need of intervention. It could mean that we need to differentiate a little bit more in the lessons and just kind of build on the skills that, they don't like necessarily lose the skills over the summer, right? It's more of like reigniting their background knowledge that they already have about what they learned in the previous grade level and making those connections. So I think that's part of the communication around it, is just helping people to understand that like, if they were green at the end of the year and they slipped to yellow, that's probably going to be corrected by the middle of year assessment when it comes back out again in the middle of the year. So it's, it's knowing when it's actually a problem, right? Like what you said, like, okay, when, when should be worried about it? And do we need to look at intervention or whatever? We have the intervention in elementary school now. Or is it just like, just need some more time back in the classroom, re-engaging in those prior skills?
Kara, you got me thinking about how we send this information to parents. And one of the things that comes to mind is, remember this report comes like a piece of paper in the mail? Is there anything in the system that would allow us to begin to allow parents to get this thing electronically?
That's a, that's a great thought. I think electronically is definitely the preferred method. We talked about that at the last meeting too, just in terms of how we communicate. So I don't know specifics in terms of how we would go about doing that. I'm, I'm picturing it looking probably a little bit different at each level. Our elementary report card is a standards-based report card that I think, you know, we were talking also about the, the need to now, you know, align the standards that are being taught at different parts of the year and make that correctly represented on the report card too. But I think we're picturing it being provided to parents where there's also time for some conversation. At our elementary level, we're doing conferences and report cards in January, conferences in November, and their report cards in January. So we'll have to think about that. So I think a combination of electronic, but then also some narrative for explanation and then opportunity for in-person conversation.
Could you put it in Power School?
That's a great question.
We did get, I don't know, I know the middle school students got a piece of paper. I don't know if the elementary school students did.
So the middle was a one-time thing before they figured out how to get the report cards in Power School? Now it's back to electronic?
You're talking about report cards. She's talking about.
Oh, I didn't get anything in I Ready in Power School.
You have, you should have an email from Lindsay, probably. You have a seventh grader, so I know you have an email.
I, I didn't get that.
Yeah? Oh, it doesn't come to you? Yeah, fifth and seventh, they got, and a piece of paper came home. And, and they actually, I can forward it to you. Lindsay does, does a snapshot and explains the blue bar and the green bar. There's no yellow, but anyway. I just didn't note that also went to elementary.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's, there are some technological barriers that we have to get across because I Ready does not talk to Power School, right? Like, we can't, like, those scores do not in any kind of automatic way link into Power School. I'm in terms of printing out a PDF report, they can be printed in batches or by individual students, and there's no parent information in I Ready to email those, right? And so like, I'm, I'm sure that there is a way to try to do that, but even the downloads for an individual student report don't have any identity markers that'll allow us to merge it with the kid's name, right? So like, it, it is much more complicated than just we're not clicking a button to send it, right? Like, there's actually not a current way to do that very easily. Like, I, I live in a district where my children do I Ready, and when we get a report card home, the I Ready report is with the paper report card, right? Or I would get it during a parent-teacher conference because of that barrier, right? To email those reports home is not easy to do. Slash, I have no idea how to make it happen. It would be something we'd have to figure out, and I don't know how to do that, so.
So, so thank you for, for pointing that out. I was wondering why we were getting paper copies. But did the same communication go for K through four? Or did we only do middle school this year?
It was a, it was a middle school initiative to send that data home this year.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm looking down. Does anyone else have their hand up? Like, just for extended math, I just have a question for next year, the incoming seventh graders. Are we going to take a snapshot to say like, this is how many that would have been eligible if we started day one, just to kind of track the program to make sure that this is the best fit? I'm just wondering how we're tracking this program.
Sure, every. Uh, every year, every student and every cohort is, is a bit different. And moving into next year, because we were not offering a separate seven extended class to place kids for September, we did not make placements. Like we did not kind of discuss any criteria or adjust it based on how, you know what I mean? Like every year that had happened, there was some adjustments made to that before placements were made. And those conversations are like, we didn't pre-place kids moving into grade seven.
I just know the goal was to, to get, to like get more kids eligible. So I just wanted to make sure we're tracking it to make sure we're reaching that goal. And I know we're starting mid-year. Yeah.
Yeah, we're tracking by how many kids are ending up in algebra.
Yep.
Because that's kind of the, the pathway to get to that accelerated math. And so we're doing it by percentage of the kids in that particular cohort that are, that are in the algebra class.
Will you offer the opt-in option next year as well?
I can't necessarily speak to that. Like I'm, I'm not sure how that's going to look. I mean, I imagine that we're gonna continue to increase access and accessibility, but those decisions haven't been made yet. And there's a, a win block structure change for next year that I know is incorporating a lot of the feedback that students and teachers had about the structure this year. And I know that we're gonna continue to try to have conversations to have as many kids access that as possible. And so, I mean, I.
Yeah, I would add to that. Lindsay, I think we were, we were able to have conversations with so many different groups of parents with, you know, different perspectives. And I think we were all on the same page in terms of wanting to just open the door to kids to give them a chance to try. We've had several conversations this spring with, with different parents who were like, maybe my child didn't meet criteria or just meet criteria, but we really like them to try and we're, we're always going to keep the door open. I think we saw that with the additional offerings in the spring and then the development of the Algebra Relief Program, because I think that is our ultimate goal to open up access to more students.
The only thing that concerns me about that model is that there are over a hundred students that's, parents aren't advocating for them, that might be struggling. And we've took, we've taken resources sort of away because we've developed more classes. So I just do worry about the kids that are struggling that might not ask for the help. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because you're taking, you, you have your seventh grade teachers now teaching two different blocks of math, where if we had just started those, those kids in one class, that would have just been one block and it would have freed the teachers up during.
But I think what Lindsay had referenced, Megan Webb and her team has done, have done kind of a, a school-wide project this year to look at the team block and how it's being used and to try to streamline win, which has started at the elementary level, and give opportunity to provide enrichment, acceleration, intervention, additional support so that it's a little bit more structured. So I know, I wasn't part of.
Karen, it's actually gonna be, yeah, it's just, it's, next year, the structure is gonna be that the, there's, in a six-day rotation, each student will have an opportunity to do two blocks of enrichment, two blocks of intervention if is needed, and two blocks of flexible time. And so access to a grade seven math teacher will be no different for any student regardless of intervention or acceleration. And so that is one of the issues that the school was taking into account, that they want to make sure was, was addressed with the new win block structure.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Does anyone else? Great.
All right. And I just want to thank Lindsay and Val and Marguerite, just not only for tonight, but just for an excellent year and just the, the work that you've done on our, our new math curriculum implementation over the last two years. It's been extensive and I want to thank you so much for all of your hard work and for staying up so late tonight and being patient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. So the only other comments I have is just kind of updating the committee. We're gonna be, the office, the office in the entire school system is gonna be closed on the third, July 3rd. So we will be shutting down on Friday. We'll be closed Monday and Tuesday, July 3rd and July 4th. We also, just to let the committee know, the following week is also the superintendent's conference, which is on the Cape. That runs 11, 12, 13. So I think Karen and I are gonna be off Friday. So kind of for the next two weeks, we're gonna be in and out. So we, of course, will be, I, of course, will be available via email and phone. If, if anyone needs anything, please don't hesitate to reach out. Other than that, we'd just like to wish all of our teachers and our students and families a terrific, safe summer. Thank you very much for all of, that you've done to, to close out the year in such a graceful way. And thank you to the teachers.
Thank you. Okay, so I have, I have no comments, but I did make a worksheet for the subcommittee assignments. I had an opportunity to speak to everyone individually, so I think that graphic should pop up there. Not, I, I feel like everyone got their first, first choice. So for finance and facilities, Tom Markham will be the chair. Kevin Fontanella and Stephen Ingles will serve in that committee. Labor relations, Stephen Ingles is the chair. Tom Markham and Kevin Piscadlo are in the committee. Policy and communications, Kevin Fontanella is the chair. Eileen Collaren and Pete Davis. For student services, Eileen Collaren's the chair, Pete Davis and myself. So thank you to those who agreed to be chairs. And you can start your work whenever you'd like, actually. If you want to take the summer off, that's great. Something Doug reminded me of when we were going, talking about the subcommittees is that before pre-COVID, they used to meet once a month. And now since then, we, we've starting to meet bi-weekly. So just take that into consideration, meet when you have to. Don't meet to just think that it's a bi-weekly. It's not a requirement to meet bi-weekly. We have some new liaison roles. I will be in the environmental sustainability committee. Pete Davis will be human rights commission. Kevin Piscadlo is the permanent building committee. Eileen Collaren is CPAC and Stephen Ingles is youth council. If I could just ask a favor of the people who are the current liaisons, if they could just either send an email to introduce the liaison or give the contact person that they used to, so the new person can reach out. I don't want, I don't want any committee to be like, no one's showing up. So that's that. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, great. The school committee meeting calendar, I know that was sent. We went back to our second and, that's a, second and third, fourth Tuesdays of the month. We checked all the holidays. I think the only discrepancy that I learned is that voting day is April 23rd, which is also the fourth Tuesday in April. So do we want to change that to April 30th? No?
I would recommend you just keep it as currently planned.
I don't, I don't have a preference. I just know that, that it will be like, it might be embarrassing if someone's sitting here and.
That's a good point. That's a good point. People are for real.
Oh, you lost!
We never meet on that. Yeah, that's a good point. No. We have to change it. Sorry.
So we'll change it to the April 30th, which actually gives the, the new committee members a, they can, a week to.
That's what we did this year.
Time to get sworn in.
Yeah.
So we'll, I will change that. And then I think all of the other ones are clear. I'm gonna have Judy update that and upload it onto the website. And just a note, the July and August meetings will also start at seven. And we can see if we like the new start time or, I know there's been some requests to change it from seven to 7:30, but everyone would need to be on board in the fall if we were gonna make that change.
You meant 7:30 to 7.
Sorry. Yeah, 7:30 to 7, sorry. Okay. Any questions on the school committee meeting calendar? No. Oh, okay. Good Friday discussion. It's, it's on here? I think Doug has some data to present.
I do.
Just have one quick.
Oh, yeah.
Procedural question. Do we know whether Judy is able to catch us? Just because she's taking our minutes. I just want to make sure we have a backup in case she's not able to view us right now.
When she can't see us, she watches the recording.
Okay, perfect.
Evan, chair, I'm wondering if just based on the time and if this is something we could table?
We can table it.
At your discretion, but, or discretion of the committee. But just I know we have a little bit more to go. We have some policies to do. It's already 10:30.
Yep. We can put that on the July 18th. Oh, you won't be here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know, for sure.
We can table that. So moving on to subcommittee reports, finance and facilities. Mr. Markham.
The finance affairs has not met since our last meeting, having concluded the fiscal 24 business. So we'll have to, now with the new committee establishment, we'll come up with a game plan.
Okay. Labor and personnel, Mr. Markham.
Labor and personnel is, is quite, is quite busy. Negotiations with the Unit A representatives have been ongoing and have been, been productive. We're not, we're not entirely in a, in a mutual agreement place on, on some things, but we're also not entirely apart. So we're, we're doing the negotiation work in earnest and, and with honor. Our next meeting is this coming Thursday in, in two days from now, so I'm sure at our next meeting we'll have something to report as well. But while I just, let me just take the brief opportunity to certainly thank the administration for all the work that has gone into getting us to this point from, from their side of things. Thank my fellow committee members for what is a tremendous amount of work. And of course, our, our teacher representatives and our teacher leaders, they do this work as, as volunteers as, as, as we do. It's their career and their livelihood at stake, but they're, they're certainly putting a lot of time, energy and reasonable, reasonable, you know, posturing into this work. So we want to certainly thank everyone for bringing us to, to, to a pretty good place.
Thank you. Student services, that's, that's me. There's a slide that says, maybe we can't get it, but that's okay, because there's a lot of words in the paper and I was not gonna read them all. I will have Judy upload it to the packet if anyone wants to go through all the information. The things that I think we as a committee wanted to point out was that there was a common theme in the actual comments, not the survey data, that there was a gap in communication. So that was one thing that came up. We found in, within the survey questions, there was a lot of alignment between teacher and parent caregiver answers. And specifically, when we asked about executive functioning skills, attention was answered in, from every, every parent and every teacher. When we asked about academic skills, writing came up in every answer. And when we asked about social emotional learning, anxiety was actually number one for every answer. So, so what do we do with that information? We had invited all the principals to eat. There was three different meetings that they attended and we shared the survey results, some thoughtful conversations. I know we brought in Sarah Ward as a keynote speaker. Well, we didn't, I think Wakefield Universe, Parent University did, and she spoke on executive functioning. So this kind of survey data might drive some of what the professional development that Karen would work on. And then to solve some of the writing gaps or concerns, we are having a new ELA curriculum. So that's kind of where we ended up. I know it's been months since we, we, the survey was taken in January and it took us a bit of time to coordinate all this. So I appreciate everyone's feedback and patience. If anyone has any questions, I can answer it tonight, or we can talk offline at a later date. Okay. Policy and communications.
Yep. Policy and communications, we met last week, just to sort of finalize on some of the policies that we had put on the table. We also talked a little bit about the calendar and such, but I think that, I think something that we can talk about further in our next meeting when we talk about Good Friday. But so as it stands now, we put, we put a number of policies on the table and I'd like to sort of make motions for them. Towards the end, we, we did ask MASC and our attorney, Ms. Spatterford, to work on a policy book like packet. It had a number of policies in it. And I just want to run through them for the, for the record when I get there, because right now it's, it's a mass of, of policies and they actually fit in. Some are new, some are just adjustments. But so with, with the committee's approval, I will just make the motions that appear in your packet and the policies. So the, the first one is our, is policy 217, public participation as presented. If you recall, that was just the one where we were putting in some, some clarifying language, taking out some, some language that effectively said, you can't use coarse language in the, in front of a school committee, First Amendment type of stuff. So we took that out and just left in, you know, just kind of be the best person you can be, be cordial, and, and we're happy. So I would move that the school committee approve policy 217, public participation as presented.
Motions been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Couple of comments. I think the version in the packet, even the updated packet, was still the old one, Stephen, not the updated one. But I did have some comments on your updated one, which we may or may not want to include. So the first question I have is, we don't say anything in here about asking the person who's speaking to state their name and address. Do we want to include that? Because I didn't notice it in, in the revised one. You, I, I think you're just gonna find the old one when you look in there.
I might.
Look at the bottom, it has your date.
I don't know if it needs to live in the policy as opposed to just general like rules.
Okay. And then the second one was, do we want to have any policy that states that non-Wakefield residents have to be acknowledged by the chair or perhaps a majority of the committee before speaking? So that our policy states Wakefield residents can speak, but if you are a non-Wakefield resident, you need permission to speak.
I have a thought, I wasn't sure if anybody else did.
I think we might want to consult council on that, because I think, I don't know that we can make that difference.
There, there are times.
No, I, I don't know either. I was always under the impression that you, that there did need to have these special considerations I recognition, but I'm, I'm honestly not sure. So.
We can sound town hall.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Such a thing is a requirement for a town meeting.
That, well, I think it's also, I thought it was a requirement discussed for town council as well, and that's why.
Would that, I don't know, but it certainly is, it's not atypical.
We haven't had the situation, but I mean, do you want random people from other towns and cities?
We've had teachers that have come from, that work in the district that have come to speak.
But that would be a situation where you would recognize them to speak versus some random stranger who just wants to speak on some topic. And they're not, they don't even live in the, the town, so.
We can just allow that.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, my comment was not disallow it. My comment was, it's at the discretion of either the chair or the majority of this body versus anyone from Wakefield can come here and sit there and be recognized for three minutes without, you know, without asking for permission.
Got it.
I think we can clarify your questions and, and bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay. So Stephen, I mean, maybe the question is, do we approve it as it is? And then if there's any additional changes, we would make those? Or how would you want to do that?
With the advice of council, we can, we can follow up with this one at the next meeting. Thing is, it's not simply, you know, grammar.
So should we withdraw it or how do we want to?
I can withdraw the motion.
Oh, oh. Time to do a second.
I just wanted to add, if we, if the subcommittee could reconsider Pete's first point, which I think may actually address the second point, that if we did put as an expectation in the policy that someone identifies themselves, because someone could also come before the committee and refuse to identify themselves. And we, and we can't really rely on, well, there's, you know, common courtesy, so. But if we, if we do have them identifying themselves by name and address, then their address would also inform the community and us where they, where they may live. So maybe that addresses.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, the, the main reason for mentioning is like you could have, you know, three minutes after three minutes of just random people from all other cities and towns anywhere coming to speak at our meeting if there's a topic they want to be heard about. So it's just a question of, do you want to have those folks have to be recognized to So it's just a question of, do you want to have those folks have to be recognized to be, to speak? Or do you want to let them speak without being recognized? I mean, it's a difference if you're a Wakefield citizen. Just a question, and maybe if you can follow up on those two things. Or maybe I can.
Maybe you can.
All right.
Can I take that back?
So that one withdrawn, moving on. So I move that the school committee approve policy 1112, public's right to know as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So just a reminder, this is the policy that sort of codified sort of how parents, caregivers could access information sort of in the district. It sort of laid out in broad strokes about what is accessible, what isn't, and then also provided links to master general law for people that might be wondering where that originated.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, so to follow up on Stephen's point, is that there's a clause in there or sentence in there that clearly delineates how records pertaining to individuals, that they cannot be released for inspection by the public. You know, so it basically reiterates some basic law about confidentiality. So it's a policy that basically will hopefully help communicate to the public, you know, certain aspects of law regarding confidentiality of personnel information.
And I would say one benefit of us having MASC host this is that the ability to hyperlink to other parts of the policy book. So if there's a position where maybe under bullying or harassment or, and you might have, you might be looking at that, maybe there's a link to right to know back to sort of help inform folks.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? No, passes unanimously, thank you.
The third one is the policy 221, student member. Policy, we effectively just added another seat at the table for students from the student action?
Student council.
Student council that would sit and offer their voice at chair's discretion to sort of some of the conversations that were happening. Might be appropriate as we start talking about school start times perhaps. So I would move that the school committee approve policy 221, student member as presented.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Tom.
So just a clarifying question. One, I think this is a terrific idea. So the clarifying question is, the policy speaks of two representatives, although the policy is titled student member and the singular, I don't mean to be that. And then you just said adding a chair. Are we adding two chairs? So is the expectation that there be two? Yeah, no, it's only, but is it, is it one person and those two members get to alternate who's come? Or is it actually two people, that both of them can come all the time?
I had the same question.
My thought was that both of them can come all the time. But that's, I'm groovy with, no matter what, I'm just asking the, so it's two members, two students who can come anytime, at all time, yep.
Okay.
So I'd prefer one, but we could vote two and they can alternate. But adding two chairs and two more voices, it just seems, what it, if they're coming from the same and they could collaborate before and decide who's, I just am not, I think two is a lot more to add to the table.
The old policy was one.
Yeah.
And there was talk about if it was two, that there would be flexibility. That like two makes it. There might not always be two, might be one or, but I think the intent was for flexibility.
Yeah, the intent, sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
Well, I think the intent was that for most meetings, it would be an alternating, but we didn't put in the policy that there would be a firm rule that it had to be just one. But you're right, the intent was that it would be, you know, kids are, they're busy, you know, they're very busy. That it would be, for the most part, alternating.
Well, that's, so for planning purposes, I guess that's what I'm saying. Like, where are we getting, well, we're coming, no, we're not. She's coming, no, he's coming, maybe. So I'm just thinking if we put one chair out, and I'm just trying to reduce the time we spend on topics, I guess. It sounds awful to say that, but I'm thinking if they, we vote, they vote in two and they decide as a group, kind of like when they come on the, at the beginning of the meetings, I forget the exact title.
The ambassadors.
They share what they're going to say.
Their student reporting.
That's just my opinion.
So this is, so this ask, this up to two, right? Could be one, could be two. This up to two is a request of students. And they're non-voting members and they're often here to listen and to participate really when asked, right? And they're kind of coached and brought into the conversation by the chair. And so, you know, I think, it's like, it feels to me like a good problem to have when kids are asking to participate. And I think to say, no, if you wanted to have two, we wouldn't have to. I mean, you control the flow.
Right, so, well, not me, whoever the chair is at the time. Are they, the chair is going to be in charge of them RSVP? Okay, go ahead.
Oh, no.
No.
Or just, they're just open seats and if they come, they come.
Oh, no, I think, I'm pretty sure they are going to be coming pretty much every, every meeting for the most part. That's definitely the assumption. I think that the idea is, you know, is that it's going to be, I think definitely a change to the culture of our meetings in that we're going to have a student voice that will be able to talk really about any topic. But I agree with Doug that you, like whoever the chair is, right? Just like any of us, right? Like if I want to talk about something, technically you don't have to recognize me, you know, either. Or, you know, you don't have to, I don't think, right? Chair's discretion, right?
It would be extraordinary.
It'd be rude.
It would be extraordinary, no. It would be extraordinary not to recognize an elected member on the school to speak on a topic.
Okay. It'd be extraordinary. But the idea that we would actually have student voice on, you know, certain issues, that definitely impacts, you know, the student body, I think is something that's very, that's very valuable. So.
And then who, how do they get elected?
That's internal, that's from other students.
So it'd be like a vote? I just don't want feedback be like, well, it was fixed or they were favored. Yeah, I want every kid, no matter what academic skill they have, or to be eligible for this role.
Two student members selected by the student council.
Okay. How are they selected? I just don't want, I want everyone to be, and I see a lot of the same faces and I feel like there's a lot of middle kids that aren't, say, high achievers. Like, I think this would be a great opportunity for like some kids who would grow from this position, that aren't already grown. Does that make sense? So I just want to make sure that we're offering everyone, I want it to be equitable.
Completely agree. If a student sort of expresses interest, they're like, please, like, go to your student council, go to your student representatives and say, I would like to sit with school committee.
Okay.
Part of it has to be participation, right? Part of it has to be people wanting to do that. Like, it can't just be picking kids out that haven't sort of stepped forward. So hopefully, part of that is like leaving the door open to any student going before the student council. I would like to have one of these positions with the school committee.
So our ambassadors attending right now are coordinated by the administration, high school administration. So that, I'm assuming wouldn't change, right? Check who's available, who's going, what are we going to talk about? So they're, they're prepared when they come. That doesn't happen by accident. I mean, that happens through preparation and planning. So I think that that would continue. I think the only difference is instead of sitting then maybe at the table over there, they're sitting over here.
Oh, so they wouldn't be here anymore either? They're talking about a new role. The ambassadors will still join us via Zoom.
So we're talking about student, so the old policy was that a student, we used to have a student representative on school committee.
And I heard that they didn't come very often.
So, okay, and so I think when I started, we had a regular student attend, right? And then COVID hit and I think it changed everything, right? From Zoom to participation to, you know, and students, I think, found it easier to come on via Zoom and just go to whatever they had to go to. But I think that theirs, based on the student kind of appeal to the policy and communications subcommittee, they had sought to kind of reinvigorate this position or restate this position. So I hear you. I think we can work on how, who, the preparation and all of that at the administrative level. But if there are parts of it that you feel like are not listed in the policy, I think we can, right now, I think we're just trying to get the policy
Okay.
across the line. Am I off with that?
No.
Okay.
But this is to replace the current student council representatives.
Okay, so we wouldn't have two. Oh, you're asking too?
So it's not going to be four students or five?
Yes.
No.
It's replacing, because typically we have two or three.
Yep.
So the student council representatives that speak at the beginning of the meeting and give an update on high school activities, that group will be dispersed
Okay.
and replaced by these two members who very well may give a very similar report.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yes. Yeah, and if one has a game and they're going to join, they're going to split the reporting. One comes via Zoom and one is at the table, then that's a one and one.
But those were appointed by Amy LeCloud, correct?
Those were appointed, those two came by student council, I believe.
Oh, student council, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure everyone has the same opportunity.
Well, your point is, I think, made and understood.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
God bless.
No, I'm just imagining the line of kids that want to sit here with us till 11 o'clock every other Tuesday night. It's going to be really busy.
I don't think we should put that in.
No. We'll try to work on the ending time. Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, thank you.
All right. Lastly, the motion is, and so I will read the motion, which would be to approve the policy book section. If you, the materials that were tabled included, they are, there's about 15 policies. And really about half of them-ish are new. So I will make the motion and then I can read you through sort of what they are in discussion. Move that the school committee approve, school committee policy book section A as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of comments on this section. One was on ADF, page two and three, which is the wellness policy. There's still a section in yellow. And I wondered if there was some italicized text in it?
So I apologize that if that is the section, so in policy, in this part A, we took out wellness. Because it needed.
It was still, I.
It needed more work. I don't know how the old policy.
And then I had a question on ADDA and ADDAR. Is that still in there? Did we take that out?
What are those specifically?
That was the query one.
Those are in there.
Okay, so my question is probably less of a policy question, although it could be more of an implementation question. One of the things I've seen as a parent is you do a query and it's also good for the entire school district, but each of the schools maintain their own query database and they don't, and they don't have access to one another's. And it's not just one. So like you get query that, I'll make up an example, Doll Bear. And you go to Galvin and they don't know you're on the query list. Or you get query to Galvin and they don't know you're on the Doll Bear query list. And I was just wondering if that was something that could be improved upon. I'm hearing, I'm seeing head shaking, no, but that's exactly what happened.
No, it is what happened and I brought this up years ago.
But there's a differentiation between the background check.
I'm not talking about the fingerprinting. I'm talking about, well, I'll get into that next, because the same question for that. But they're just the regular query. Each school, as far as I've seen, just as a parent, maintains their own database. And so therefore, you know, they can share information, but you basically have to go, like, they're like, oh, you're not in the list. And like, but I was already, I did this at the Galvin. And then you have to go like jump through hoops and it just makes it more difficult.
And I think we pay every time.
I think, I was under the impression that Karen Fitzpatrick had this master list
Goes back to some.
of who's query, who's queryed in the district. So this information, I don't know if it's being accessed, right? Or if, so if it's not being accessed, that's a question. I can, I can answer that and I'll bring that information forward for the next meeting?
Awesome, yeah, I think a master list that all the schools share would be awesome. It's not in practice what I've been seeing.
Okay.
And then, yeah, same question could be said for the fingerprinting thing as well, but I think that's less important because outside of the middle school, I don't think there's a ton of applicability to when that fingerprint comes into play. But I think both of those databases should just be shared. Sorry, that was it.
Yeah, I thought they were. Interesting.
They're supposed to be, but they're not.
And so I'll be able to answer your question, Pete, in the next meeting.
Awesome. Great. Just running through the ones, if, you know, if there weren't other questions, just so that folks know what was in the group, was a refresh of background checks, policy 103RE, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation, policy 104. Non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation, policy 104.R. Sexual harassment Title IX policy, 105. That was a, that was a large sort of adjustment there just to align with mass general law. And then we did a number of new policies. Non-discrimination on the basis of sex, which is policy 106. Non-discrimination on the basis of disability, which is policy 107. Model query policy, which is policy 108. District legal status, policy 109. Did commitment to accomplishment, what we tried to do in district, policy 222. Our mission statement was brought in as policy 304. And then tobacco products on school premises prohibited, policy 1016, new. And then, yeah, I thought we would have already had that. And then the people in their school district, again, sort of going to district responsibilities is policy 1100. So there was a number of them in that one packet. It just became more efficient to sort of look at them in a group. So, a lot of work.
Any other questions, comments? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Judy, does anyone have a liaison report? No, great. The next school committee meeting is Tuesday, July 18th. It's again, starting at 7:00. And if there's any school committee member has a comment, you can just raise your hand.
I have a, do we have future agenda items on that, on there or no?
We can do that next.
Okay. You want to do comment first or future?
Yeah, comment first.
So on June 10th, I attended my mandatory training at MASC, charting the course. And I will say, I was really impressed. I've heard Mr. Ingalls talk a lot about MASC and how amazing they are, but just seeing them up close and learning from folks that are just experienced school committee members who have been doing this for, in some cases, decades, was just really impressive. It was nice to kind of be sitting next to other newly elected school committee members. And you would think a day of kind of mandatory training would be boring, but it was actually kind of fun. And it was at the beautiful Cape Cod Regional Technical High School in Harwich, which is probably a couple of years old. And it was just a really, really beautiful building. So I did appreciate my mandatory training. I didn't know if I'd ever say that, but it was, it was actually a lot of fun, so. And then do you want me to hold off on my agenda? Or do you want to mention it now?
Okay, does anyone else have any school committee comments? Okay, future agenda items?
So we received some communication regarding a possibility for electric school bus grants with a deadline of August 22nd. I was wondering if we could add to maybe our July meeting to learn more about that. I know it probably involves capital. I doubt we're buying school buses out of our own budget. Maybe you can answer?
We have. We just replaced two buses.
So maybe a little too late, but I'd love to hear more about that. Find out, you know, what the program consists of, if this makes sense. I mean, the deadline's approaching really quickly, so if we want to participate or, you know, we're running out of time to put in that grant.
Do we want to invite the student?
It was the ESC, Tiana, I don't know if I pronounced her name correctly, who brought it to our attention. And I don't know if anyone else from the district would be applicable to have in this conversation.
I don't know, I don't know. So we contract, our buses are contracted through North Reading Transportation. So for our full-size student buses that transport students to and from school, that's a contract for an outside vendor. So I don't know if that grant is for districts that are purchasing their own buses. You know, that's something that I think we probably could figure out straight away and that would inform the conversation, whether it's something that we might be eligible for or not.
Okay, so I'll put it down and we can talk about it?
Yes, yep. So in the contract, oh, I'll save the conversation for later. But in the contract, we, even though we're buying buses, the other company operates them? Or we're not buying the buses or how's that?
No, we have a couple, we can talk offline.
Okay, save it for next time. I don't want to have the conversation today. But I just.
But I just want to make sure we, we talk about this before that deadline passes, just in case we want to do anything about it.
Anybody else? So I have Good Friday, July 18th, a logo update, hopefully a vote on July 18th, and possibly the electric school bus grant. If anything comes up between now and the 18th, just reach out.
Will do.
Timing's perfect. It's, it's almost 11:00 even.
Oh, yeah. Should we wait till 11?
No, no.
Oh, motion, sorry.
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, June 27th, 2023.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? No, all in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimously.
Glad I didn't have to amend the motion.
Thank you, everybody.
June 28th.
Not amended, just.